We'll call this meeting order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the call.
Dear Supervisor, please be advised that the Tremplaw County Board of Supervisors will meet at 7:00 PM on December 21st, 2020 in the county boardroom. All county board members' claims are due in the county clerk's office by noon on December 4th, 2020, so they can be prepared for audit committee approval. Sincerely, Paul Severson, County Clerk.
Call.
Rick Nimitz. Douglas Winters.
Here.
Sally Miller. Richard Sasia.
Yes.
Joe Feltes.
Here.
George Brandt.
I hear.
Beth Killian.
Here.
Randy Tulffson.
Here.
Michelle Haynes.
Here.
John Austin.
Present.
Chuck Waller.
Present.
Tim Seglin.
Present.
Dan Schreiner.
Here.
Mike Nelson. Jeanne Nutter.
Here.
Kurt Skoyan.
Here.
Ron Johnson.
Yes. And no Sally yet.
No Sally.
Okay. So we're 15 and 2.
Okay. Certified open meeting law requirements have been met with proper posting and notification. We have a 11-item agenda. I'd like to make a couple of changes. On item 5D, Human Services report from Deb Suclis. She's going to delay that for a month in the interest of time. And also, under the resolution 6D, the Board of House resolution, I want to move that up to right above A. So it'll be the first thing in the resolutions in the interest of time because we have a lot of public here and that's basically what they're here for. So we're going to move that up. So I'm looking for a motion to that effect.
So moved. Is that amended?
Amended agenda, yeah.
The amended. Okay, I just wondered.
Does our second do it?
Second.
Motion by Feltes, seconded by Johnson.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Maybe I missed something. Will the public be allowed to speak during this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's...
Well, we have to get a motion.
Motion. We have to have a motion to that effect, but wait till we get the agenda done first.
All right. I wanted to know if it would need it to be in this motion.
No, not in this one. Okay. You got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? I did. Opposed? Carry now, carry. Minutes. For a motion to approve the minutes?
I so moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Waller, seconded by Winters.
There are two sets. Are you... Is your motion to be both?
I'll make a motion to approve both of them.
Okay.
Both sets. Motion made, seconded to approve the minutes of the 10th and the what?
Sixteenth.
10th and the 16th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Carry now, carry. Quarterly update under appearances. We have District Attorney John Stacia virtual. Go ahead, John.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? I'm getting a fair amount of background noise on my end. Are you able to hear me clearly?
Right. We're hearing you good.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak with each of you tonight. It's great to see so many people from the public present, making their voices heard tonight on an issue of real concern to them. I'm going to talk about just a few things and I'll be brief in the interest of everyone's time. It's been a while since I've spoken to you, you, the board. And since that time, there have been a number of changes in my office. Emily Lee, who was our Assistant DA for a little over a year, has accepted a position in Eau Claire County, so she's working up there in a slightly bigger office and a bigger community. And I'm happy for her. I think it's a good fit. Fortunately, we have been able to hire a very excellent replacement for that ADA vacancy. A gentleman named Mike Diaz has accepted the position and he started a couple of weeks ago. He was a Judge Advocate General Prosecutor in the U.S. Army for much of his career. He has also worked as a tribal prosecutor on the eastern side of the state, on the Menominee Reservation. He's also had some experience on the other side of the bar as a defense attorney. And so we're glad to have him on board. He brings some experience to the office and so we're fortunate to have him here. And he's going to be a great member of the team. So he's already done quite a bit to earn his salt here in the office. We're happy to have him. I know that he looks forward to meeting all of you in the weeks and months ahead. That's the biggest change for my office since last I asked you all. And it's a big change. It's a positive one. In terms of ease load, the Tremplaw County District Attorney's Office, it used to be incredibly busy. We had, this year, 2020, so far, we filed 536 new criminal cases this year. It does include the roughly 1,200 ordinance matters that have also been handled by this office. Ordinance matters to include traffic offenses and lower-level disorderly conduct type offenses. So we've been very busy. Compare that number 536 to last year. We're down a little bit, but that's to be expected, given the slowdown in everybody's lives and the economy throughout 2020. Last year at this time, we had 613 cases filed, which was the record for 2020. But we're still higher than we have been in the last eight or so years, which is staying alive. So keep in mind, we're very busy up here. It was just me in the office for the last three months. Well, the secured attorney, he has his position, so I've been very busy. Mike is now very busy and so we're doing the best to keep things rolling smoothly. Fortunately, the COVID situation has not considerably slowed down judicial economy here in the county. We're still continuing to hold hearings by Zoom. We're doing some hearings in person when necessary or on request. So we're continuing to keep the wheels of justice turning, which is a good thing. And unfortunately, a lot of other counties aren't able to say the same thing. Finally, just kind of looking back on the year in review, it's been incredibly difficult for so many members of this community. They've experienced a lot of uncertainty regarding their jobs. They've experienced uncertainty regarding childcare and how they're going to provide for their families, how they're going to get their kids to school, how they're going to provide childcare. It's been a very difficult year for law enforcement. Law enforcement have had their reputations and their names unfairly dragged through the mud and it's been a very difficult and challenging year for them. Looking to our recovery court, it's been a tough year for people who are in recovery. The number of in-person AA meetings and NA meetings has dropped substantially. And for those people who need support and community, times are tough. And finally, you know, looking to our community and looking to our businesses, it's been an incredibly challenging year for small business in Tremplaw County. And, you know, unfortunately, although we all have hopes that in 2021, things are going to bounce back, you know, I think the sad reality is that all of this COVID pandemic has hit the livelihoods of our community members extremely hard. And I think we all need to be empathetic to that when we're doing our job. So, you know, now is the time for empathy for everyone. For law enforcement, for people who are struggling, personal lives. Empathy for people who are trying to make ends meet, are in very difficult circumstances. Empathy for business owners who are trying to do that same thing, earn a living in a very challenging environment. So I encourage each and every one of us to embody that empathy in all things we do, to include our professional work. I'm trying to do that and I think that everyone should. And that goes for the community as well. I know that everyone's here to discuss this COVID-related ordinance. Just so everyone's clear, this is not something that I'm party to as a district attorney. I understand this is of course county level. So I haven't been involved in the drafting or establishment of this ordinance. But I would encourage members of the community, if you have concerns about what's happening in your community, to get in contact with me and my office. I welcome you to speak with each and every one of you regarding the things that you think are going right or the things that you think are going wrong. I'm accountable for everything that happens in my office and I take seriously all of your concerns. So please, if you have questions about criminal matters or ordinances that my office is prosecuting, please reach out, give me a call, send me an email. And I'm happy to make time to discuss your concerns. Thank you all for your time. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to hear those at this time.
Okay, anybody have any questions to John? Carry now. Thank you, John, for your report.
Take care.
Next on it is Parks and Tourism and Economic Development.
I think Sally's on now.
Sally's on now. We have Reed. Reed, Ellen. Okay, Rob Grover first.
All right, good morning, or good evening, folks. Actually, you know, we have a little bit of a PowerPoint. Reed, you want to see if we can find it on there quick? Darryl is going to be doing it, but I think he had to run to the other room to do some IT stuff. Oh, beautiful. All right.
Looks like he knows what he's doing.
There you go. So, yeah, I'm Rob Grover, Tremplaw County's Economic Development and Tourism Coordinator. And Reed and I were asked by Beth and our committee just to come and give a short little presentation on sort of what we've been up to here in 2020. We won't take up too much of your time, but, yeah, just have a few things to present to you, so. First of all, just some of you may not be aware, but this is the proposed mission statement of the Parks Tourism Economic Development Committee. It's been something we've been working on for a little while this year. And you can read it up there, but I'll just read it for you real quick. I know, I don't think some people can see this at home. So the mission of the Tremplaw County Parks Tourism Economic Development Committees is to continually explore and implement strategies to further develop Tremplaw County as a leading place to live, work, and play. This will be accomplished by focusing on initiatives that both improve the economic lives and provide opportunities for the development of new skills of our citizens, promotes and further develops our tourism assets, and honors and protects our rural character and natural resources. We'll also strive to further develop our Tremplaw County parks and lands in a way that provides youth with opportunities for both recreational enjoyment and environmental education. So I think that gives you just a little taste on why this committee was formed back in 2016 and sort of what guides us as we do our work. Again, this is our proposed mission statement that our committee is still working on, so. So as my title, my job title states, you know, I do economic development and tourism work. So just to give you a little taste of what our tourism numbers were in 2018 and 2019, we really had a great 2019 when it comes to tourism here in Tremplaw County. So for 2019, the Wisconsin Department of Tourism data showed that we were in the top 20% of all counties in Wisconsin when it came to growth in both direct visitor spending and total business sales. So that's a really great achievement for us as a county when it comes to people wanting to come here. In addition, tourism in Tremplaw County accounted for over $3 million in local, state, and federal tax revenue in 2019, which is a 1.7% increase from 2018. So just what that shows us is that we really have seen a lot of growth in the last years and it puts us at a very strong position going into 2020. Obviously, 2020 has presented some really unique challenges, but seeing how we were already coming from such a place of strength, I think we are better situated than a lot of parts of the state of Wisconsin when it comes to a real rebound, so. Yeah, so tourism numbers for 2020. Obviously, we don't have those numbers yet. The State Department of Tourism releases that data usually in April of the next year, which is, the first week of April is National Tourism Week, so that's when that's released. But I actually, I'm feeling pretty good about where we stand right now. So we unquestionably will see a decrease in tourism spending, in tourism in Tremplaw County in 2020. That is inevitable, just with the state and national situation we find ourselves in. But as the numbers show, this past spring, Travel Wisconsin saw a 371% increase in searches for hikes and trails. The State Department of Natural Resources reported a 24% increase in ATV trail passes, a 100% increase in the number of those buying fishing licenses for the first time, and a 18% rise in visits to state parks. And why I'm so optimistic about tourism in Tremplaw County going forward is the number-one reason folks come here is for outdoor recreation. You know, whether it be our bike trails, whether it be our bodies of water, whether it be Pearl Park, whatever it may be, Tremplaw County is more and more developing into a destination for outdoor recreation. And that's not just during the warm months. You know, we're coming into winter when snowmobiling is such a big thing and ice fishing and all that. So I'm actually very optimistic for, even though, again, I believe we will take a hit for what the 2021 numbers will look like relative to the rest of the state of Wisconsin, so. One of the things that we have done within the last year to really help emphasize our outdoor recreation options, but also other options, is a new mapping tool that we have on our Tremplaw County website. As you can see up there now, instead of calling and requesting a physical map, which you still can do, people can search things right on the website, such as scenic sites, snowmobile trails, trout streams, parks, campgrounds, golf courses, restaurants, wineries and breweries, things like that. So this is still a relatively new resource, but more items are always being added. And of course, when you're planning a trip or a vacation these days, you're doing it online. So the more that we can make this an effective tool, the better it will be for marketing the county. And our, within the Department of Land Management, we have our Land Records Department and they have done tremendous work developing this resource, so. And then, you know, another aspect of the work we do is helping Tremplaw County residents and businesses during this time. Since the pandemic hit, you know, there's been a slew of funding from both local, state, and federal levels trying to help businesses weather the pandemic. You know, one of the, these are just some of the prominent ones that our department specifically worked with businesses and individuals to help them get access to. So the Paycheck Protection Program, which provided forgivable loans and also was geared towards helping people stay employed. We're All-In Grants, which was from the state of Wisconsin. Tremplaw County, so those, the first round was $2,500 grants that could go to various businesses to basically, for anything that they saw fit. So, you know, a lot of them, it might have been for utility payments or paying rent on their building or things like that, was really a lifeline to help keep businesses going. And Tremplaw County got over $500, or just about $500,000 in the first phase. And the second phase just closed. Those grants, we haven't gotten a report yet of how many Tremplaw County businesses got those grants. But again, we did a lot of work helping businesses connect to those, so. There were some grants for cultural organizations as well. Old Main down in Galesville, we worked with them to help secure a grant to continue their operations, which we're very proud of. We received, applied and received a tourism marketing grant from the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. And basically, we're using that as we speak to help promote Tremplaw County as a place for people to start considering some of their winter tourism. And then this is not pandemic-related, but we're still pretty proud of it. Our department worked with, or helped the City of Galesville get a Wisconsin DNR Recreational Trails Program grant to work on the High Cliff Park Trail. If any of you know that park down there, it's where the Swinging Bridge was and the big flood of 2017 took that down. But they're going to be working, they're doing work to restore that trail, a bridge of some kind, maybe down the road, but we're very proud of that. So that, you'll see some work starting down there in 2021. Go ahead, Reed. So, yeah, so just to sum things up on my piece, we're really proud of the work we did in 2020. Tremendous challenges, unprecedented challenges for businesses and individuals this year. But I think we have done as much as we can to try to help people weather this storm. And as we go into 2021, I'm actually pretty confident on how we're positioned. And hopefully, you know, with the vaccine coming out and people feeling more comfortable about traveling, they'll have Tremplaw County on their minds. And that's really what we've been working to do, so. Thanks for your time and then we're going to throw it over to Reed to talk a little bit about the parks.
Yes, please.
Yes. You know what? I should have. The Centerville Curling Club, the best place to curl in western Wisconsin. I agree.
What is he talking about? I didn't hear it.
That's right.
There's a lot going on in this room right now.
I'm sorry, Doug.
Was it curling?
Oh, I'm a southern Tremplaw County person. You bet. I love them all. Oh, I'm sorry.
Jeanne's got a question.
Yes, Jeanne.
Are you going to talk about the fabulous new website for the, well, the county and how you really enhance the website?
Oh, you bet, yeah. So a piece of that was our online mapping for our tourism assets. And I should, actually, I should mention though, too, we do have an event calendar on the website as now as well. Of course, that is not as full as we would have liked it to be this year, you know, but as 2021 rolls out and more events are scheduled, we'll be getting those on there. So, yeah, the website has been a tremendous asset, a real step forward for us here in Tremplaw County in helping promote ourselves, so.
Is your mic on?
I believe so. It is. Yep, green light's on. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Reed. Well, thank you, Rob. I'm flattered that we had so many hundreds of people show up to listen to my boardwalk presentation.
I know.
I'm just going to, Beth asked that I speak as well a little bit on what I've been up to in this past year. I'm just going to talk about a couple of projects going on at Petrick Park. I believe one of these, which is, oh, there we go. So I don't know how many of you are familiar, but this is the trail system at the park. It's down closer to the river. A lot of people are unfamiliar with the park itself, but if you are, you may not know there's, you know, a trail system down there that's good for walking and horseback riding and whatnot. So last fall, so the fall of 19, the southern little yellow area there, we put in a boardwalk to get over some of the wet areas to allow people just to access the trail system without, you know, walking through water and whatnot. And this year, we added three more in the, this past fall. So basically, the next two slides are just going to be a little kind of repetitive, but they're just going to show pictures of what the boardwalks look like. Here's, here's the first one we put in. It's about 40 feet in length. It looks dry right now. It's obviously been more of a drought kind of year as opposed to the previous years we've had. There's, you know, a foot and a half of standing water there. So I'm sure those wet, wet times will come back. So here on the map, that's where that boardwalk is. The next one is just an eight-foot section. There's a culvert there that we removed and just put this in there. Now you'll notice there's no ramps on here. We're going to be adding those in the spring. That's how we can get, you know, our UTV and the mowers and easier accessibility for people to walk over. So we're going to be doing that in the springtime. But for this year, we just completed these boardwalks. And then here's another 56-foot section. Just a few pictures of it there. And there's on the map where that one is located. So it's exciting to, you know, have that down there. We did the DNR permit and we didn't have to add any fill or anything. It's the best way to, you know, allow access to this trail system without having to disturb the wetlands or anything like that, so. The next project that's going on, we are entering, well, we just finished up year one of the prairie restoration project. This is area that you see here is in the north end of the park, northwest. That's the railroad tracks there on the left side. The area in yellow is about two and a half acres and this was broadcast season with native prairie, 38 different species in November of 19. And so this past growing season in 2020, it was mowed four times. It's kind of part of the process of the prairie restoration. And I did count 17 of the new species already emerging this year, which means we've got a pretty good take. I'm hoping that with the drought year, you know, we still had a decent catch and it didn't, you know, set some plants back or kill off some of the seedlings, but I guess we'll find out. We're going to repeat the mowing in 2021 and there's going to be continual maintenance going forth. So hopefully, in a couple of years from now, when the prairie is complete, you'll see a lot of color out there. It'll be eye-catching from 93. It'll be something that people are going to really want to come in and see. And we're going to have a mowed trail path through there with kind of a, you know, a point in the middle that's going to be a point of interest for some. I still haven't thought of exactly what to do there, but I've got some ideas, so. These are just a few of the projects that are going on at the park. We're also renovating the lower shelter. We've had concrete put in there this year. And we're going to be doing some more work, adding some garage doors and making it a little bit nicer in there so it's not so much of a dungeon feel, so. That's pretty much all I have for the park. And does anybody have any questions? Yes, Jeanne.
I don't have a question, but I think you should highlight how busy the park was with park reservations and so forth that was quite a good year.
You bet. I don't have the exact numbers, but camping was, I'd say, almost double the amount of people just because of the pandemic, people getting out. It's a good, you know, safe place to go with your family and whatnot. But the shelter reservations were cut about in half. It was, usually it was every Saturday and Sunday, but in a way, we were trying to gear it away from that so there'd only be one party and then we would, you know, not have people come in the next day to allow for, you know, proper sanitization and everything. So camping was up overall, but shelter rental was down this year. So I guess we'll see what 2021 brings. Any further questions from anybody?
Nope.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Reed. Okay, we'll move on to next presentation. Oh, need more sheets. Anyway, President, Highway Commissioner, all ring up? It's in your packet.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I, as well, will try to move right along so we can get to what everybody is here for tonight and to get out and watch the stars line up tonight. I think it's Neptune and Jupiter or Saturn or something.
It's too late.
Is it too late already?
It was right after sunset.
Oh, okay.
It was probably dead, so couldn't see it.
All right.
You have to wait 800 more years, George.
The stars did line up for us tonight, though. Okay, so I'm just going to go over a map of what we did this year, how we spent our $4.95 million that we bonded, and then I'm going to go over another map of what we're going to do this upcoming year. So starting out with this map that you guys got in your handouts, this 2020 road construction on top. There's two of them. Yep, so the one with 2020 road construction, this is what we did this past year. The upper-left corner in that blue box, we spent $4.8 million on roads and $375,000 on bridges for a total of just shy of $5.2 million. We completed 12.2 miles of road resurfacing this year. I went back and many, many years of records at the Highway Department and I can't find anywhere where we got anywhere near the Simone mileage. So we kind of made some history this year. So I'll just run through this map going from north to south. Up in Osseo, that little green line there, that's, that was a .63-mile section of road that came in at $164,000, which equates to $260,453 per mile. And that's something, I put this cost per mile because I just kind of want you to note how the cost per mile really changes depending on the type of treatment we did to that road, whether it was a pulverized and overlay, whether we widened the road, whether we just overlaid it, whether we replaced culverts or not. So those costs per mile can really vary. Moving over there by Strum, Highway D, we did 1.52 miles. That one came in at $540,000, so that was $360,000 per mile, quite a bit more than the one Osseo. Highway H, south of Osseo there, that was one and a half miles. That was just over $1 million for that one project for a mile and a half. So that came to $670,623 per mile. That project there was so expensive because we had a lot of earth to move. We cut through some hills, we flattened some curves, we straightened some curves, we widened the road out. The pink lines that you see on here, that's, those are chip seal projects and I'll get to those in a little bit. Highway D, north of Whitehall, 4.03 miles. That came in at $1.1 million, cost of $275,300 per mile. That one there, we did widen half of that and then we pulverized. and then we pulverized and overlaid the entire portion. Going down to Arcadia, we did two blocks of the city of Arcadia, County Highway J. They had some storm sewer work to do down there, so we ended up replaving, repaving two blocks worth of County J at $40,000. Highway I, down there west of Etrick, 1.6 miles, that came in at $353,000, cost of $220,573 per mile. And that was one where we just pulverized and overlaid it. We didn't do any widening. Note, all these ones that we pulverized and overlaid, we did replace the culverts and all those. So those costs are also built in here. County Highway Double J, north of Dodge. So far, what we've done this year is we replaced culverts, we did some slope and ditch work, we did a little bit of widening. We are down there currently brushing over the winter, and we plan to pave it here next summer, which I'll talk about on the other map. But so far this year, we spent $102,000 down there on Double J, 1.7 miles worth. Dodge and Pine Creek, in downtown Dodge, we repaved that through town, we pulverized and repaved that through town. That came to $323,700 was the final bill on that. Downtown Pine Creek, we pulverized and repaved that, replaced some culverts. Final dollar on that was $344,000. For a total of $667,000 spent between Dodge and Pine Creek. Moving south, County Highway G, 1.4 miles. That was one where we pulverized it, and we did widen that out to 12-foot lanes on there as well. And that came to $387,000, a cost of $276,554 per mile. And County Highway Double A was one I wanted to do this past year. We just didn't get to it. So that's one we're gonna be doing right away next spring. We did put in a new culvert down there this year, which was $2,669, as you see, but we will be repaving that here this coming summer. We're gonna pulverize, widen, and then repave. If you look along the left side of this map, I have those red boxes there under the legend. The first one is chip sealing. This year, we did a total of just over 11 miles of chip sealing for a total of $215,000. That comes to $19,720 per mile of chip sealing. We did a just shy of $122,000 worth of pavement marking. I spent just shy of $100,000 in design fees for projects that we're designing for next year and the following year of 2022. And so the road construction portion of that then comes to $4.37 million. Any question on what we've done this year for construction, what we have completed?
Just talk about how you prioritize and how you
Yeah, I, I am prioritizing roads. Number one condition, you know, just how deteriorated is the road? And then number two is traffic counts. You know, how busy is that road? Is it a pretty heavily traveled road? Is it a connector or major arterial? So traffic counts and condition. There are some roads that are in worse condition that I'm not touching up because they see four cars a day sometimes. We have that around here. Okay, so we have the same amount, same amount of money this year, $4.95 million to spend between bridges and roads. And my plan this year is on this 2021 road construction map. And right now, these are all my estimates, my construction cost estimates. But starting up on top, O and Triple O up in Osseo, we're going to pulverize and overlay that. The city of Osseo has a few blocks within their city limits. That we'll be working with them on. They're gonna replace their underground sanitary water main and storm sewer. I'm estimating that to be around $375,000. That'll be 1.4 miles. Moving south of Osseo, County Highway O, that's gonna be a two-mile stretch. That is one I'm gonna just pulverize and overlay, chew up the old blacktop, put new blacktop down, new shouldering. I'm estimating that to come in at just a little over half million. You see the little blue bridge right to the right of that, Double O Bridge there? That's gonna be getting replaced this year. That, bridges, we only have 20% stake in those. 80% is covered by DOT. Moving south, Highway D, south of Whitehall, this is gonna be our big project this coming year, starting right at the south city limits of Whitehall. It's gonna be 4.3 miles going out to Nelson Road. I'm estimating that to be just shy of $2 million. That's gonna be a lot of earthwork on that one. We're gonna be bidding that out to contractors. We'll be doing some slope, slope widening, lane widening, straightening some curves, flattening some hills. Moving south, Pike Road Bridge, Town of Arcadia, that's gonna be getting reconstructed this next year. From the county portion, we only have 10% stake in that, and the township has 10% in that. The other 80% is covered by DOT. Bradley Road over to the east, Town of Preston, another bridge going next year. Again, we only have 10% in that. The township has 10%. Steve picks up 80% of that bill. Over in the west side there, by Dodge, County Highway Double J, as I mentioned before, this last year, we did some ditching, culverts, and brushing this year. Next year, we're gonna just overlay it, 1.7 miles, gonna be about $300,000. In the middle there, down in Etrick, there's only about three blocks worth. We're going to reconstruct that, pulverize and overlay between the curb and gutter. It's gonna be about 1,000 feet. I am estimating that to be about $60,000. County Highway C, this is the other big project we're gonna have next year from Beaches Corners to Heg. This one, we actually just bid it out last month. It was awarded to Heg Contractors. The bid actually came in $100,000 less than my estimate. So hopefully, it comes in around $900,000 instead of a million. But that's gonna be 2.7 miles. That one, we're gonna be widening that road by four feet, new ditches, new culverts. And moving down Double A, down in the lower right corner, east of Galesville, as I mentioned, we put the culvert in this past year. This next year, we're going to widen and pave it. I'm gonna be widening that one by four feet as well. That one's got a lot of traffic on it. Estimating that to be $300,000. And in the lower left corner, the County Highway G Bridge, just north of Highway 54, that one is going to be, again, 20% our cost, 80% paid for by the DOT. So over in the left-hand side of this map, I have a little summary table there. I'm anticipating spending around $4.4 million in road reconstruction, $147,000 in chip sealing, $60,000 in painting, $100,000 in design, $330,000 in bridges, with a grand total of just a little over a million, $5 million. And then in addition, I just want to mention, I don't have it on here, but I also, I did apply for some LRIP money that I'm gonna be, I have an additional little over $300,000 of LRIP money to spend on our roads next year as well. Any questions on road construction for this upcoming year?
County C is pretty heavily traveled. Will that be shut down completely?
Uh, yes, it will.
Okay. Good to know.
When does that project start?
Uh, it'll be sometime in the spring.
Okay, like April, maybe?
Uh, probably earlier, probably May. Yep. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, like, yeah, April.
Okay. I was thinking, what calendar are you looking at?
Yeah.
Just so you know, I'm really happy with what you did on D by Strum.
Yep.
It's beautiful.
Everybody likes a nice, smooth road. Any other comments on road construction before I move on to, I'm just gonna touch on a couple of maintenance items? I'll be done in just a minute here. Okay, so as some of you may have noticed, we're doing a lot of brushing around the county. We did a lot of brushing last winter. We're doing a lot of brushing again right now. The weather's perfect. We have no snow. We are going gangbusters on brushing right now. So one comment, I, I went back. So from 2014 to 2019, I looked at our history of spending in the highway department, and the average spending over them five years, we had spent $132,000 in brushing activities in five years. Just this past year, from January 1st up until, well, I pulled these numbers, as of last Friday, we have spent $518,000 in brushing so far. There's still, the rest of this week and next, we'll probably hit about $600,000 in brushing this year. And I plan to spend that same amount for next year. One comment I want to make about that is this additional money that we are investing into our road construction, we now get more money from the DOT. It's called our General Transportation Aid. It's GTA money. So going back to 2014, our, our average of what we got for state assistance averaged around $900,000 a year we got from the state. Two years ago, we got that ATC money. That's when I did Highway H up there. We spent around a little over $2 million that year. That's already paying, it's, it's rewarding us already because this year now, we got $1,024,000 from the DOT. So that, that's quite a, that's a, you know, $170,000 increase. So the more money we spend on our roads, the more money we get back from DOT to use for maintenance and road construction. So I guess that's the only thing I really wanted to point out in our maintenance. We're gonna be doing brushing on Highway T. There's signs out. I think somebody asked me about it the other day, what those signs are about. So we're brushing there. We're brushing down by Dodge and Pine Creek. We're brushing up in Osseo on B right now. We're gonna be brushing on D, south of Whitehall this winter. We'll brush as long as we can, as long as we don't get too much snow where we get snowed out. Any other comments? Otherwise, I, I'm done.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Al.
Wait, I have a little, I have a short question. Is fall the time that you do brushing?
Yeah, we start in the fall when we're done with road construction, and we will brush through the winter, hopefully out winter. We did last winter. Just sometimes if the snow gets too deep, the guys just can't walk in those ditches carrying chainsaws, you know, we get the, get deer stuck. So the snow could shut us down if we get a lot of it. Hopefully not.
Okay. I'm just worried about pheasants, you know, who nest in there.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Al. Next thing on the agenda is presentation by George Brandt.
Oh. She's next one. Most, if not all of you know that our, the director of Tremplaw County Community Television is moving on to, to other things in his life. He'll be leaving towards the end of the month. I've been a beneficiary of the work that the television studio has done for over 30 years now, and what I want to do is to spend just a little time talking about John Kelly and what his tenure here has meant to Tremplaw County Community Television. What?
Three minutes.
I'm usually the guy sitting up there saying, "Three minutes." All right, I'll try to make it three minutes. I'll make it short. And I, like I told John, there's not gonna be a plaque. There's not gonna be a citation or anything like that. But so we'll start with the dictionary. Command. Command is defined as to represent as worthy or qualified, to praise, to put in the care of another. The dictionary defines appreciate as to recognize the quality of, to be fully aware of, to be thankful for, or to increase in value. John Kelly, we, I am commending you today, and I am appreciating you today. I asked some department heads, and I apologize if anyone has emailed me. I didn't get all the emails that Kevin sent me, and gratefully, he was able to give me a copy. Kevin Lean and the Department of Land Management wanted to say, "John Kelly from the TV studio has been instrumental in aiding and promoting the Department of Land Management in so many areas. I will highlight a few over the years. We host an annual youth poster and speaking contest, annual events held at Petrick Park, and just in general, highlighting and promoting our county park. Working with individual staff to highlight and film amazing drone footage of conservation practices like Myers Valley and Turnon Creek and the new boardwalk at the park and the rain garden." Parks and Tourism Economic Development side has sent this, this list. They partnered with TCTV with, and, or TCTV partnered with various chambers and other groups in Tremplaw County to create videos and other media that promoted their communities. They helped promote and grow the TCTV show Discover Tremplaw County. They expanded the amount of coverage on TCTV of Tremplaw County artistic events, concerts, interviews with artists and other cultural events. And under John, they increased the access and publicity of Tremplaw County events by making TCTV both able to broadcast remotely and getting coverage to live stream online, which hopefully a lot of people are watching right now. And they partnered with the Health Department to get real-time information out to businesses and the public during the pandemic. The list could go on. The representative from the Health Department wanted to say this to John. "The entire Tremplaw County Health Department wants to sincerely thank you for your years of support and collaboration. You have promoted many of our programs, reaching our community and encouraging healthy lifestyles. We have worked with you on suicide prevention, car seat safety, bicycle safety, and immunizations. We are deeply grateful for your continued support through the COVID-19 pandemic, and you have been an integral part in communication to county residents with our weekly public health updates. We truly appreciate your time and expertise. You will be greatly missed, and we wish you the best in future endeavors." I personally would like to say thank you to John for making it possible with the Information Technology Department for county government not only to be open and available, but quite possibly to function during the, this pandemic. Without the technology in place that TCTV has created during your time here, we would have been like, as Barzak has said many times, like so many others, building the plane while flying it. Instead, our local government was already aloft. Also, as Chair of the Environment and Land Use Committee, my many thanks for continuing to record and broadcast our meetings. Though interest has waned as the hot topics of land use and conservation have given way to other issues, when those interested need to know, the record is there, not only in black and white, but in high-definition color. I asked the staff, that's not it, that's something that's taped here. The staff, Drew Martin and Rick Chotin came up with this list of technological changes that have happened under John's leadership, that we went from standard definition to high definition. The schedule is posted online via the county website instead of being sent out in the mail. We have an official TCTV Facebook page. We're using drone, drone technology to capture aerial footage with cooperation of Tremplaw, the Department of Land Management. And they're not only in the process of cooperating with the Federal Communications Commission, we are, we are being closed captioned as we speak. So for those of you who are speaking today, you will, there'll be actual writing on the screen telling people what you're saying. And we started streaming, they started streaming through the county website in February of 2020 to be viewed on home computer, smart TV, or smartphone. And I know people who are watching us on Roku, as a matter of fact. I just found out what that was. And in cooperation with the Facilities Department, we will have a new microphone system by the end of next year, hopefully. So John Kelly, I'm not, I'm not asking him to come out. He's out there trying to make us look good. He's the only one in the studio today. I appreciate you. We appreciate you, and we commend you with our praise to whatever or whoever you serve in the future.
There he is.
Thank you.
All right, grab your closed captions right now. It is on the screen. So if you're watching at home and you'd like to turn your closed captioning on, they're working pretty good. I did see, it's doing its best with Tremplaw and probably some of the other names that are gonna be said tonight, but for the most part, it's pretty accurate. I'd like to thank the county board members, my committee, the people from the public, the communities that have allowed me to see and take in so much at Tremplaw, Tremplaw County. When I first started here, I, I wasn't aware of all the organizations, festivals, community support, things that happen in a rural county. And I was really happy to let the new director, who's coming in, know the kind of environment he's gonna get to work in. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go. Okay, at this time, I was gonna move item D up. Before we do that, though, I'd like to have a motion from the floor to allow public speaking.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to allow the public comment.
Is there second, the motion by Thompson, seconded by Johnson? Is there second, the motion by Tolson, seconded by Johnson?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, we should discuss this before voting.
Yeah.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the impulse, uh, which has given rise to this request for a public commentary, but I have some reservations. I'd like to voice them, and I'd also like to voice a alternative. Um, the, um, the whole idea of the public comment period is to give the public ample time to, to express their opinions. Now, I'm all for that, I'm all for that, but I don't, I also think that by doing this, if we, if we enter into this public comment period, we are, uh, running a, so we're certainly violating the spirit of the open meeting laws, and we are possibly violating the actual law. I mean, we have not posted anything. The Corporation Council put something out at nine or 10 o'clock this morning, and, uh, the usual period is at least 24 hours. So I think we are asking, we are, we are actually, uh, opening ourselves up for, uh, judicial review. If we do make any kind of a change to the ordinance, we're opening ourselves up for judicial review, possibly for judicial reversal. And so what I'm saying, what I'm proposing, that's the reason. What I'm proposing as an alternative is I'd like to ask everybody to think back about a year, exactly a year, when a very controversial ordinance change was again coming before the county, that was the ATV ordinance. And the PTED committee held a, uh, a public comment, a, a full-blown, uh, public hearing, just like they did, just like we did for the sand mines. A full-blown public hearing with ample notices, two notices in the paper, plenty of room for everybody, uh, plenty of time for everybody to speak, not squeezing it in, this, this, this is really a travesty of a public hearing. So not squeezing it in like this. So what I'm proposing is that the board consider doing that, that would, which would involve, to, to, doing that, which would mean, send this back to the pub, send the whole resolution back to the Health Board, to the Board of Health, uh, with the instructions that they hold a complete public hearing, as happened last year, and possibly also carefully consider the language in the, uh, some of those paragraphs in the, uh, proposed changes, the proposed revisions. If everybody's been listening to your telephone or reading your emails, you'll, you'll realize that most of the criticism has come around the, at least the perception that the Health Director would be getting broad and sweeping powers. So I would vote against this motion to hold a public hearing now, and say, go ahead with the, with the amended agenda, uh, when we, we're at that, when the, when this comes to the, when the resolution comes to the floor, send it back to the Health Committee, and have a public hearing there, and have that committee look again at the resolution.
I'm going to turn that over to Corporate Council because I'm not sure how to answer that.
Well, it's not, it's not a, you don't need to answer it, it's just.
What is it you would like some input on specifically?
So we have a motion on the floor to, to violate a longstanding policy of the board of holding hearings at this, at the full board meeting. We're going to violate that, and we could have done this differently, we could have had a public hearing at the committee level. So I'm saying stop before we do anything, go any further down the wrong path, send it back to committee, start over again, and, uh, do it the way we did it last year with the ATV ordinance.
Yes.
Me?
Yeah.
I, I would just like to agree with what Supervisor Zieglin is saying, because I think we need to have a hearing in a facility where everybody's able to come and speak, where you can have social distancing and spread out, and people, there are a lot of people who talked to me who did not want to come tonight because they were fearful of being in close quarters, you know, and they're calling on the phone. And just as a county board supervisor, I just got this information on Saturday in the mail, and I'm sure some of the people I talked to on Friday thought I was a lunatic because I didn't have all the information in front of me, so I wasn't making good sense when I was talking on the phone. And I spent today doing a ton of research, and I don't feel at this time, I'm even ready to make a decision about what we're talking. I feel like we put the cart before the horse, is that right? And I would love to have a full-blown public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Go ahead, Sally.
Do you recognize me? Okay. Um, I have concerns about a public hearing for just a public health perspective. I can't see what's happening in the room, but I do know that if we're going to have people standing up and talking, we are going to be creating a situation in which we are going to have particulates moving through the air, and I'm not sure that. So I would support putting this to a full, um, back to full board, or to the Health Board, and then having a public hearing at that point. Um, I know, because we've done it in the past with the Board of Health, and people called in, and they called in the whole meeting, so I certainly think we're capable of doing it, um, and I'm certainly supportive of what Supervisor Zieglin is saying.
Okay, any other comments? Beth Killian.
Uh, my green light is on, can you hear me?
Hold it, tell you.
Put the microphone by you.
Hold it, there you go.
Yep. Um, as Ms. Miller did say when we brought this up, um, not at our past meeting, the previous meeting, there were public comments, uh, made at that meeting, and, uh, so I, I'm not against postponing this and having a public hearing at a future Board of Health meeting, um, but there was opportunity in the past to make some public comments.
Again, second time.
Okay, all right, this is the last comment I have. If we were to have a public hearing, a full-blown public hearing, and we've had public hearings in places other than this courthouse, we've had them at the high school, we've had them in areas where we can have, accommodate a large number of people who want to participate. I feel like there's not going to be 100% participation with the county, because in my district, I'd say 98% of the calls I got came from people who were not living in District 15. So I don't even know, I, I got, I know of two people who called me from District 15, so I don't even know if everybody in my district was even aware of what was happening tonight. Um, so I feel like we're not prepared because we are not having a, an official public hearing. And I'm uncomfortable just adding it on at 9 o'clock this morning that we're going to take public comment without good notice.
Have any ideas here?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm ready to ask Rick that specific question. Uh, Mr. Zieglin has, has indicated that we, we might be opening up ourselves for judicial review and possibly overturning whatever decision we make. Can you talk about, um, uh, talk about that? Is this, is this something that's so unusual that it's, it's possibly, uh, could be challenging, Court?
The first comment I guess I would make is this is, this was added on as a public comment versus a public hearing, and there is a big distinction between the two. Public hearing has its own set of procedures that it has to follow in order to hold one. This would not qualify as a public hearing. Um, this will qualify as public comment. People are allowed to comment on anything on the agenda, it does not have to be just on this particular topic. So I just want to at least make that distinction upfront, is that this is public comment section, which is not required by statute, um, and so it can be, some committees do it, the county board has not done it for a period of time, I, before I was here anyhow, they had not done it. So I just want to make that distinction first. The other thing I would say is this was added to the agenda after the fact, so yes, it certainly is open to, um, the possibility that it could be challenged. Would it be successful? Where would it go? I mean, obviously that would be up to the court, but it certainly would be up to challenge because it's not standard protocol, it's not normally how you do it, I mean, you give it the 24 hours in advance. In certain limited circumstances, you can do it, I think, something two hours in advance, um, but there would be argument on that as well, too, as to whether or not what we did this morning constituted enough notice and that kind of thing. So it certainly would be subject to, to, um, challenge if someone chose to do it, if this was added to the agenda and allowed to proceed today. So there's always that risk, but I mean, anybody can challenge anything that takes place at any of these meetings as well, too, so, um, it really, you know, whether it's this or something else, it can be challenged.
Just to move forward as it is, how many people are signed up to speak?
Uh, there's like, uh, a good 20-some, plus there's three online, on hold right now, right? At least three on hold.
Is it even possible for us to be able to hear those tonight, the time, a lot, or we give them only so many?
Or just three minutes per person, and then I was hoping that if, if it's just somebody repeating what somebody else said, that they would forego their time, because we do have their vote, whether they're for or against. So I don't know.
John?
Yes.
Put this down as two, Paul.
I did.
You know, people make an effort to get here from wherever they, they come from. I like Rick's distinction between public comment and a public hearing, um, uh, obviously as, as, uh, being on the committee that oversees public hearings all the time, I understand Mr. Zieglin's concern, but, um, as long as we just, we describe this as listening to the public, what's to, um, um, why, why should we send everybody home?
Right, it's, it, that, that's, that's my idea, too. It's not really a hearing here, this is a public comment period. We have several peo, I don't know how many, but there's several people from the public, just want to make a comment, and then we could vote on this particular deal. Uh, one last time?
I don't, it's my third time, sorry, I didn't think I'd say anything else. Um, I just want you to remember, George, that, uh, Mr. Niedmeyer did say, any decision that we made tonight regarding this could be challenged. Because there wasn't proper notice.
I did, I heard that.
So either way, it could be challenged. And that's the thing that makes me uncomfortable, is that I feel like we are just not following protocol, and everybody, I'm not sure everybody had notice to talk about this very pressing issue.
I question, Rick, uh, I, I'm not following this, it's, it's on our packet, it was our, part of our agenda.
The resolution is, but the public comment isn't. That's where we're on right now.
The public, allow public comment.
We could have public comment, we're just, if there's a larger amount than we normally see, right? We could have public comment on any of our items.
I, I, we've had public comment at meetings before, I know we've done that.
Court, court members can request somebody to provide information if they choose to at any given time on any given topic, um, so it isn't strictly, but as long as they're invited, um, that is, that is correct.
If they're invited, you're saying?
If they're invited to speak, that is, not necessarily invited to the meeting, but invited to speak, yes.
So anyway, I'll go back to the original motion. The motion was made by Tolson and seconded by Johnson to allow the public comment period.
Mr. Chair, are, are you going to formalize the three-minute limit? I mean, will that be part of the motion?
Right, right, I got my set of rules here. Um, one of the rules is going to be that there's no intervention from the supervisors during public comment period. We'll have our ample time to talk after the public comment period, where our pros are con, as supervisors, before we vote, so.
John?
Going back, yes.
One other question here, could we vote to have the comment, and then when we actually vote on the policy change, could we send it back to committee then?
Paul is saying yes.
Because I don't know what your motion is, you know.
You could have, that's a motion at the time.
If we made a motion at that time.
At the time of, yeah.
Because right now, I've got some questions about it, too, that I think need to be ironed out.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That, that was broken up, I couldn't hear what was asked.
Get on your mic.
I was asking is if we vote to hear the people that are here, and let them have their comments, but then when it comes to the, uh, review of the health ordinance, could we send it back to committee at that time?
Yes.
And the answer to that was yes.
Somebody could make a motion to send it back to committee.
After, even though we hear the comment tonight.
Right.
So the people that were here tonight could have their say, and then still send it back to committee.
Correct.
Okay, that's good, that makes me feel better.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Again, could you finish your describing the rules for the public comment?
Oh, well, there'll be no interaction between the supervisors and public while they're giving their speeches, and there'll be time for that afterward, when they're done with their public comment period, then supervisors will have their period to discuss whatever happens to this, uh, motion.
Mr. Chair, on what rule call?
Rule call on the, okay, we can do that. And then after that, uh, the board of supervisors will go, and then we could go into voting or whatever's going to happen to the actual, uh, ordinance at that time, but.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
What exactly were you just going to have us vote on? I mean, Chuck, support him?
Well, I'm not, I'm not proposing, I was asking.
Right now, right now, we're just voting on whether to let the public make a comment.
Right now, we're talking about the public comment.
Right now, we're just voting on whether or not we allow the public to have a comment.
Thank you.
And I was asked if we do it by rule call votes, we'll do it, then we'll call votes.
Okay, this is to allow public comment. Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Rick Nimitz?
Yes.
Douglas Winters?
No.
Sally Miller? Sally Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sasham?
Yes.
Joe Feltes?
Yes.
George Brandt?
Yes.
Beth Killian?
Yes.
Randy Tolson?
Yes.
Michelle Haynes?
Yes.
John Austin?
Yes.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Zieglin?
Yes.
Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Scorian?
Yes.
We have a 15.
It passes. And I'll go over the rules again. Right now, the, we're just going to let public comment, there's no comments from the supervisors while the public is speaking, and because we've got people on, online, I'm going to do the phone ones first, and I don't know if I got them in the right order here or not, but, uh, somehow you're going to have to get them into a speaker, they're limited to three minutes, and if, hopefully, if the comment's already made, we would ask you not to repeat it, just whether you're for or against. The first one is from Heidi Meyer Becker. Who's got Heidi Meyer Becker on the phone? You have to get her to a mic. You have to get it to a mic somehow, put this speaker on and buy a mic. Oh, no, they got one, they got a.
No, they got a good mic there.
If you got a good mic.
It's just they have to hold it down for a full second.
Well, you gotta hold it down till the light turns green.
How many people does it take to make? I thought it would be sooner rather than later.
I hope it isn't till you.
I can't wait till a year from now to have a decent mic.
Got to hang up and push the speaker.
Well, we were hoping it was going to happen for tonight, but.
Hang up and push the speaker, or push, push speaker and then hang up.
Heidi, can you hear me? I can. All right, you can go ahead. So I, I am not for the House Office official, or whatever the official word is you're calling this person, um, you know, I'm, if you would have a health official, I believe that their job should be, you know, they get out there, they educate the people, they make people aware, they make things available for people, they hold things in different towns. They do not, however, have the right to go around and fine people for not having a mask on, or not having what they believe is what people should be wearing, or for not having people standing six feet apart. That is not the position, that is not what they have to do. We, as American people, have the right to choose what we want to do. I personally wear my mask all the time. You know, I go in stores or whatever, I have my mask on, that is my choice. However, if other people do not feel that way, that is also their choice. Also, the other thing is, is you need to think about this. This starts small, okay? You take the rights away from an American people in one way, it's going to snowball, and it's going to keep going, oh, well, it worked in Tremplow County for this, or, oh, it worked here for this. You have to think, one of these days, if this happens, people are going to take a right away from you that you feel is unfair, and it's going to come back to the beginning of this. So, like I said, while I am not opposed, if you have a person like that, but them being able to go out and fine and saying you have to do this, or you have to do that. able to go out and fine and saying you have to do this, or you have to do that, that's not right. That is completely unconstitutional, and I guess that's all I have to say, but I am definitely opposed to this, and thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you. Laura Ressler? She's going to speak in favor.
Laura?
Yes.
Okay, just a second. State your name, where you're from.
Hi, Laura, can I have you state your name and where you are currently living, what city or township?
It's Heidi, and I live in Whitehall.
You got Heidi.
Lori?
Heidi.
Laura.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to take you off, I'm going to put you on speaker, and then I'll have you state your name and what city you're from, okay?
Wait, I think she just.
All right, Laura, can you hear me?
This is Laura.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Hi, this is Laura from Trempeau, and I am representing the Coalition of Together Against COVID-19. It is an organization, or Trempeau County organizations, that there's over 80 of them between schools, and businesses, and retailers, and libraries, and banks, and restaurants, and we have businesses that are down to one person running the business, and we also have the largest employers in the county on this coalition. And we are writing you, to tell you about that we take the pledge for the safety guidelines set forth by Trempeau County, by the Wisconsin Department of Health, and the CDC. We put the needs of our communities first and foremost by taking each visitor and employee safe by signing the pledge to mask up, to monitor our employees' health, to stay home if you're sick, to sanitize and clean surfaces, physically distance and to wash hands. We are writing to request that you put forward a countywide mask ordinance requiring facial covering. We do not ask this easily. Each of us has taken it upon our individual businesses, organizations, and schools to spend significant amount of time and finances on helping slow this terrible pandemic. Many schools have closed in-person learning, and many businesses have greatly modified and restructured operations to keep their doors open and everyone safe. Each action has helped reduce the spread, but we need your help. We need you to create an enforceable mask ordinance, help all the people in Trempeau County be safe, much like not allowing smoking in bars, or restaurants, or creating a speed limit on roadways. This ordinance will not change anything from people that already put the needs of their community above their own. It will, however, make a huge change in fighting this pandemic, preventing infections, and ultimately saving lives. We have tried everything, and beseech you to use your elected power to help our county survive. This national issue must be dealt with at a local level, and you are the people that can make that happen. We believe this is a great opportunity for Trempeau County to become a leader in the control of the virus. Please seriously consider the request for the countywide mask ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sherry Nelson?
Hello, Sherry?
Huh? I have Sherry Nelson on the phone, is she in the room with you?
Okay.
Why don't you make that comment when they're trying to get this person on?
If it gets too loud, then we're going to have to shut the door, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Todd, and I'm from Trempeau, and I'm calling in support of the Health Department ordinance. We hire these people, they're trained, they're educated, they're the boots on the ground. I respect all the board members, but nobody signed up for a full-time position to handle a pandemic. When we're looking at rights, I think there's some confusion about rights and so forth. I own my car, I still have to wear a seatbelt, I can't drive above the speed limit, I can't pass on a double yellow line, so, I think there's some confusion with rights and constitution and so forth. I also hope this board supports the county Health Department. They are tasked with a huge pandemic that nobody ever asked for. They have done a fantastic job with limited amount of resources, limited amount of employees, and with the amount of misinformation and attacks against the county Health Department currently going on, it's a disgrace to the county, and I sure hope that this board steps up and shows support to the county Health Department. Thank you.
Michael, thank you so much for calling, and.
Your next one.
Really hard to hear.
Hard to hear, but I have this Sherry Nelson, is she still on or not?
Hello, is that Sherry?
And then I think we're going to close the phones off, or we'll never get through this.
Well, then, when you, you can't hear the people on the phone, because they're taking calls, so it's useless.
Are you ready?
Okay, yeah.
All right, go ahead, Sherry.
Hi, I'm Sherry Nelson, and I'm from the town of Albion, where I'm also the town clerk. COVID has affected several members of my family, and I personally know four people that have died from COVID. This is a serious pandemic that needs to be fought in every way possible. Wearing a mask is one of the most effective ways to prevent transmission. I urge you to pass the public health ordinance to protect the residents of Trempeau County. Thank you.
Okay. I also have Linda Machi from Whitehall online.
Hello, Linda? All right, I'm going to.
Just to close, we can just stop and do.
Okay, go ahead, Linda.
Hi, Linda Machi calling from Whitehall. I seriously just have a quick question for the board to review and the Health Department. I'm wondering how, why the Health Department and the board feel that they have a right to make this decision, whether for or against. The how and why is what I have the most questions, and I would hope that when you review this, you actually say how and why they have the authority, or you have the authority, to make this decision. Say how and why they have the authority or you have the authority to make this decision.
Last, Mr. Chair.
I thank you very much for your time.
I have one more. Yep, and then.
Does everyone else? Um, hi, Julie House.
Julie House.
Go ahead, Julie.
Well, it's Julie. I guess my biggest concern is, this is over the mask mandate, I'm watching this on TV, I'd like to know who the two people are standing in the hallway with no masks on in the county building.
Is that?
Was that it, Julie?
That was it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go to the people in the back room, I have a list, there's a bunch here, so. I have no particular, yeah, you got.
Are we going to allow that?
Well, you can still take, but I'm going to let them go. I'm going to let them.
Do you want to hold?
Put them on hold if you got more. Anyway, Michael Larson from Trempeau, and on deck will be Michael Franks.
Hi. Thanks for letting me speak. Merry Christmas. Good evening. I've got a prepared statement, so, good evening, my, my name is Ann Larson. Actually, that's my wife. She wrote this. My husband and I, or I should say, my wife and I moved from Minnesota to a hobby farm near Pine Creek just over four years ago, and since that time, two of our children have also settled in Trempeau County with their families. I'm here to represent the entire family, who urge you to please vote no on the revision of the Chapter 11 Public Health Ordinance. The addenda notes for tonight's meeting state that the revisions to Chapter 11 are to provide local health officials with additional options to implement preventative measures against the coronavirus, because there are limitations at the state level. This begs the question, does the Health Department actually wish to be freed from any and all limitations, either practical or constitutional, on their power to dictate the behavior and lifestyle of the county residents? Such a revision to Chapter 11 would open the door for a serious abuse of power both now and in the future, and should give all proponents of the democratic system serious pause. Additionally, the fact that the Health Department sees the need for more power to enforce the current mask mandate, as well as any future restrictions they may come up with, implies that there is real resistance to such measures among the residents of Trempeau County. Therefore, it would behoove the members of the board to remember that, as elected officials, it is for them to represent the true will of the people, not the will of the county Health Department, or any other unelected official. If the citizens of Trempeau County do not wish to have such restrictions imposed upon them, then board members must oppose this resolution, putting aside their personal opinions on the issue. The meeting agenda notes also state that potential fiscal impact of the resolution includes wages of Health Department employees, or compensation for independent contractors. Does this mean that the Health Department intends to hire its own police to enforce its mandates, or will enforcement just be based on neighbor turning against neighbor to report infractions? Surely, this is not the environment in which any of us would wish to live. The primary concern for the Health Department should be to protect the vulnerable, while allowing healthy individuals to live normal lives and build natural immunity. They should not be spending time and taxpayers' resources policing citizens. Thank you.
Michael Franks?
Good evening. Good evening, I am Lieutenant Colonel Retired Mike Franks from Independence. Your employers, we the people, urge you to, urge you on the Trempeau County Board to vote no on this illegal, vague, and far-ranging harassment ordinance. The revision to Trempeau County Public Health Ordinance, Chapter 11, provides shockingly vague and unlimited powers for a government bureaucrat. This county employee Barbara Barzac is not a doctor and is not elected. I quote from the proposed revision, "The county health director shall promptly take any measures necessary to prevent, suppress, and control any communicable disease," cold, flus, venereal disease, any disease, anybody name a communicable, or any disease that's not communicable? I hear resounding silence. We won't issue, or the health director can issue any orders, advisories, directors, directives, recommendations, or other mechanisms in order to carry out his or her duties and responsibilities. Any person who violates or obstructs this ordinance may be subject to the issuance of a citation, a fine, a summons, or a court order, and the fines range from $25 for first offense on up, and you've all read it, I'm sure, I hope. This ordinance is an act of terrorism against we the people, and is repugnant to the Constitution, and you know it. It's already been found unconstitutional by the State Supreme Court. This order, or ordinance, would force the police, under orders from Barbara Barzac or her office mates, to burst into our homes and take our children if we don't do whatever Barbara wants. This vague ordinance allows Barbara to do anything she wants to do, for as long as Barbara wants to do it, and is widely ranging or impetuous as Barbara wants. Barbara can issue orders concerning mask wear and social distancing, and certainly will. Barbara Barzac can issue orders closing or limiting businesses and schools, closing churches, and governing your home life, like children's playmates who you can or cannot have over. All the things that Wisconsin Supreme Court has already ruled is illegal. One of the first of any directives, quote, that Barbara Barzac would certainly issue would be a masking order. Mask wear is not science. Would any medical professional here tonight say that the only garments worn by healthcare personnel when dealing with COVID-positive patients is a paper mask? We all know that's not true. This entire vague and far-reaching revision is simply harassment of citizens, and has already been ruled unconstitutional by the Wisconsin Supreme Court. I want to alert you that this order would also initiate a county request to the state to initiate a statewide mask and comprehensive order, since you know this action is illegal, you'd be committing willful, malicious, and intentional misconduct, which removes your qualified immunity from personal lawsuits, per Wisconsin Legislative Council Information Memorandum 2015-12. Therefore, you should each be aware that everyone you find harassed could be a plaintiff against you in court.
Thank you.
I will forfeit my time for you. My name is Ann Dutton, and I will forfeit my three minutes, so you can finish your speech.
Thank you.
I will forfeit my three minutes, I'm Holly Matthews.
Thank you. Since you know this act has been ruled an illegal act, you will be committing willful, and I quote from the memorandum, "willful, malicious, and intentional misconduct, which removes your qualified immunity from personal lawsuits," close quote, per Wisconsin Legislative Council Information Memorandum 2015-12. Therefore, you should be, each be aware that everyone you find or harass could be a plaintiff against each of you without your presumed government immunity, because you know what you're doing is already illegal. So, you're going to make a county, somebody in the county have to take you to court. We the people, your employers, demand you vote no on this gross attempt to infringe on our freedoms. For years, we've all been deciding our own safety, we're adults, we do not need your intimidation and bullying to decide now. Good evening.
Thank you. Now I took my whole list.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mark Staffler? Mark Staffler? I'm sure I killed that name.
Michael Franks?
No, Mark Staff, Staff, Faulkler?
Stop, ticker?
There you go.
He might be in the Trempeau room.
He's all.
They were all supposed to be here.
Anyway. Heather Frits? Frits?
Heather Frits.
Okay.
The guy who wasn't here, I would just turn it on.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for letting us come here, thank you for letting us have our public comment time. I am bringing a letter that is representing 572 people from Trempeau County. These were collected since, within 24 hours. So, we did not have very much time, you're correct, but we have banded together, and this is extremely important to us. Since Thursday, we have gotten over 700 people in the county involved in this. 200 people were outside tonight, standing up for our constitutional freedoms. There are several in the county who are afraid to sign this letter that we brought to you, because they are worried about repercussions with their already struggling businesses. So, I'm going to read this letter to you. If I have to take an extra spot, I have people who said they will volunteer their time. "To the county board supervisors, it has become evident that you, our elected representatives, have forgotten that we, the people, where your authority derives, is where your authority derives from. Your only authority is derived from we, the people. It is necessary for we, the people, to hold you accountable to the oath you took to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of Wisconsin. In doing so, we must inform you of the violations you have or are attempting to perpetrate upon we, the people. You have already violated your oath with the things that you are doing already with current mandates. If you vote for this new proposal, you will be further violating, and you will be taken to court." You are committing, you have found, we find you in violation of the National Constitution, specifically the Bill of Rights. In particular, there are several amendments in the federal and the Wisconsin Constitution that are listed here for you to read. Terrorism is defined in the Code of Federal Regulations as "the." There are several in the county who are afraid to sign this letter that we brought to you because they are worried about repercussions with their already struggling businesses. So I'm going to read this letter to you. If I have to take an extra spot, I have people who said they will volunteer their time. "To the County Board Supervisors, it has become evident that you, our elected representatives, have forgotten that we the people, where your authority derives, is where your authority derives from. Your only authority is derived from we the people. It is necessary for we the people to hold you accountable to the oath you took to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Wisconsin. In doing so, we must inform you of the violations you have or are attempting to perpetrate upon we the people. You have already violated your oath with the things that you are doing already with current mandates. If you vote for this new proposal, you will be further violating, and you will be taken to court." You are committing, you have found, we find you in violation of the National Constitution, specifically the Bill of Rights. In particular, there are several amendments in the federal and the Wisconsin Constitution. They're listed here for you to read. Terrorism is defined in the Code of Federal Regulations as "the unlawful use of force and violence against persons or property to intimidate or coerce a government, the civilian population, or any segment thereof in furtherance of political or social objectives." You are violating the USA Patriot Act of 2001, Section 802, and you can read this. "Unalienable are rights given to us by the Constitution. They are impossible to take away or give up. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Liberty is defined in here for you, as you've forgotten. The law of the land consists of the Constitution written by we the people."
Have we got a volunteer to?
Take my three minutes. What's your name? Holly Matthews. They gave it back to me, and she can have it.
"The Constitution is written by we the people, under the authority of God, to empower, control, and restrict government servants." You can read the rest of that. "The Constitution protects us from our own best intentions, so that we may resist the temptation to concentrate power in one location as an expedient solution to the crisis of the day. You cannot be making up laws and mandates on the fly, even in a so-called pandemic. And yes, I know people that have been affected by it, I am not denying that at all. Neither the US Congress nor any state Congress has the authority to write statutes that control people's behavior. It is up to the people to control their own behavior, and if they injure someone, the common law has remedies. vested authority in our legislators is found in the law, the real law. The common law is the real law. The supreme law of the land, the code, rules, regulations, policies, and statutes are not the law." This is defined in here for you to read, decided in Marbury versus Madison back in "Legislators simply do not have the authority to rule-make. Where rights secured by the Constitution are involved, there can be no rule-making or legislation which would abrogate them." The color of law. The following codes, you are not allowed to also use the color of law. US Code 18, Section 241, conspiracy against rights. If you are found guilty of that, you may be imprisoned for any term of years, or for life, or both, or you may be sentenced to death, as some of these can be considered treason and sedition. Deprivation of rights under the color of law is defined here in US Code 18, Section 242. US Code 42, 1983, civil action for deprivation of rights. US Code 42, 1985, Section 3, conspiracy to interfere with civil rights. All of these are being violated with current mandates and your attempt to further the control of the Health Department. Section 42, US Code, US Code 42, Section 1986, action for neglect to prevent. You can read through these, I will be giving a copy of this to the Chair. Rights and sovereignty. Interpretation in favor of the people. Any constitutional provision intended to confer a benefit should be liberally construed in favor in the clearly intended and expressly designated beneficiary. Then a constitution should receive a literal interpretation in favor of the citizen is especially true with respect to those provisions which were designed to safeguard the liberty and security of the citizen in regard to person and property. Shall not infringe..."
Is that it? You got more?
I have a little bit more.
Somebody want to donate some more time?
Yep. Remedy for every injury. In closing, this letter is to serve as a notice that we the people are instructing you, the elected representatives and appointed officers, to immediately cease any and all unlawful and unconstitutional actions that are being perpetrated upon we the people. As I said, we have already found you in violation. In addition, the unlawful and unconstitutional acts committed by you in your representative-appointed capacity under the color of law holds you both professionally and personally liable for your actions. If you do not immediately cease and desist, we the people are prepared and have assistance of counsel to seek remedy against this body and each individual, to which will include lawfully removing you from your representative or appointed position, suing in both professional and private capacities, and criminal charges. I will hand this letter to go to the Chair, along with 572 signatures from we the people.
I don't want to carry your last name up. Introduce yourself so I don't kill your name, Frank.
My name is Mark Staffaker. I pastor Berean Baptist Church over in Galesville, and I appreciate the couple of moments that I have here to speak. I would like to first of all say, I do appreciate our Health Department. I think it's been very challenging times that they've had to deal with, and it's certainly been a challenging year for, for all of us. I do believe, however, that this proposal that is being made today, prop for today, is overreaching. This proposal, as far as I'm concerned, I'm a pastor of a church, would give the Health Department the power to tell us that we cannot gather as a church, and I think that is a violation of my constitutional right to be able to gather. And so I'm going to urge this council to not vote this in, to vote against it. There certainly are measures that need to be take, need to be taken for COVID-19, it's a very serious thing, but I think that this is far overreaching in its language. It's not, it's very vague in some of what it says, as far as what the powers they have to do, and, and I'm going to encourage you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a Deb Bork? Deb Bork? Is there a Deb Bork out there?
She might be in a different room, so we'll get it off this side and come back to her.
I have a Deana Austin.
Well, I'm not fancy with written-out, beautiful, and cannot even come close to what so many people came up here and said today. My name's Deana Austin, I'm a business owner, I've been a business owner for over 15 years, and I have five beautiful, healthy, amazing kids that I have in this district, and in this area in our county, and we're so blessed to have such a beautiful area. My husband has a business as well, and I'm afraid with this going on, and I'm actually so disappointed in each and one of, even my father-in-law, for allowing this to even come to this point. To a point where us as citizens, to me, having to find out Friday about you each taking a stance on what I can do as a citizen with my business, with my children, and what rights I have to make decisions for myself. I sit and watch you guys monthly in your meetings, and I'm proud to be a citizen of you guys, but I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed that you guys allowed this to get this far, without letting us citizens, us, to know what is going on. You hid this. To have people moving out of their chair while we're sitting here with our businesses at stake, and my children, who I keep roofs over with my business, that I built from just a little baby, that I dreamt one day that I could buy a boat for my husband and go fishing and do things, but you're asking us as a business owner to shut down our businesses because we decided to have rights for letting our clients have rights. I'm disappointed, and I'm tired. My grandpas worked hard, they went to all lengths to make sure that our land and the freedom could be here, and we could have businesses, you could start a business, you could start a business, you could start a business, but you are here sitting today as you moved out of your chair, moving your, out of your, moving your things.
No comment.
I couldn't hear, which is why I moved.
As you're falling asleep, months after months, and I'm watching you guys half asleep, and disappointed in watching these meetings. You're supposed to know us, right? You're supposed to know what we want, but you don't. You said you only had two people out of your district call you? You should know them personally, you should know whether or not they have businesses, are they concerned about something, what are they doing in their business? So no, please do not vote on this. Give us our rights to decide on what we can do with our businesses. I built my business for years. I want the right to decide on what I can do for it, by whether or not we can wear a mask, or we can't wear a mask, is not what we should be talking about. My great-grandmother fought for our country, welding in a factory for less than two cents an hour. And I'm standing here today as a woman, as a businesswoman, as a businesswoman. I will not allow you guys to do this to us.
We got some time left on this one, I'll allow her to go on. Go ahead.
Another fact. If you guys are so worried about masks, why are you sitting in this room right now today? Because those masks will not do nothing for you. I have clients who have talked to me about people dying in their household, who wore masks, who stayed home and never went anywhere. Give me the right to decide whether I go out into public, give me the right as a business owner to allow people into my home, into my business, not having to worry whether you decide to let the Health Department shut me down and not pay my bills. Bills, which we should set aside and think about. I give so much back to charity. I help out with so many things in our community, charities that depend on what I make for the year, and if I don't have that money for the year, which we have really have gone downhill, I have to take that back. What are you guys going to say to those charities who defend on a lot of us business owners who give back to our community? All because you want to let some powerful woman who wants to have this stance in this world right now, saying, "We need this to be something." What do you need it to be? You have no rights. I'm disappointed. Thank you.
There you go. Deb Bork available? Deb Bork?
Good evening. My name is Deb Bork. I'm a retired registered nurse, 30 years practice. I have lived and worked in Tremplow County my whole married life. And when I found out about this the other day, I didn't even know this was going on. I'm Tremplow County Chairman, Republican Party, and I didn't even know about this. We've just gone through a hell of a year. And we have Christmas in three days. I watched the Grinch movie the other night, the animated one, which is ironically a lot more fun to watch than Jim Carrey's, you know, I like this one much better. At the end of the movie, he says, "Christmas is about love and kindness and not being alone." Where the hell is the love and kindness from this room? I, I, I understand about COVID, I've lost some good friends and colleagues and family. I'm not minimizing this disease at all, but this mask is probably going to protect you for five minutes. The only reason why you're using this is to make you feel better. It's not protecting you from somebody else, and it's not protecting yourself. What you need is you need the big ones, the 95s, even those little things that you have, those little mask things that come down, they don't help you either. What's the best defense? Stay home when you're sick, wash your hands, sing "Oh, McDonald Had a Farm" for 20 seconds when you wash your hands, with soap and water, after you go to the bathroom, for sure. Keep your phone clean, sanitize things when you have to. Let's use some common sense here, but don't try to shove something like this down us when we've already suffered already. Thank you very much.
Mike Phantom? I think it's Phantom or Papam or Mike something.
Popham.
Popham?
It's Popham.
Okay.
My name's Mike Popham. I live in the town of Prescott now, I used to live in the city of Arcadia for many years. I was a town alderman there. I served on the fire department for eight years with some of you in this room, I've served on other committees with some help from this room. We talk about, we can talk about this being about the mask mandate and argue for or against it, or whether or not. There's nothing in this that doesn't already, is not covered underneath the governor's mandate. The thing that I think everyone is mostly concerned about is the overreaching power that it has, and how it violates the Constitution. I'm not going to sit here and debate that COVID is not real, because we know it is real. It's not the first pandemic this country's lived through, and it's not going to be the last pandemic this country lives through. I'm just asking each and every one of you to rethink the verbiage that's in this, and how it violates our God-given rights under the Constitution. So, I know there's a lot of people that want to speak tonight, so I'm going to leave it with that, and just thank you guys for your time.
Carla Short? Carla Short? Carla Short in the room, there? Not in that room? How about a Bob Short? There might be in, are they probably in the Tremplow Room? Are they in the Tremplow Room?
Maybe.
Nobody's moving there either. Larry?
John, when you, when you read the name, they probably registered for or against, could you make sure that?
Strong opposition on both of them.
Okay, thanks.
Bob Short and Carla Short. They're both from Osseo. I'll send them aside just in case they show up. Larry Holstra? From Osseo? Is that Larry?
Stephen Dorie.
Oh? How about a Stephen James Sischa?
Not here.
Kathy Johnson? Kathy Johnson here? Whitehead?
Read where they stand on it, too.
In opposition, all these are in opposition. Okay, Kathy Johnson. Adam Norlander? In opposition? Not there? Stephen Dor? Stephen Dor in opposition.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Dor. Some of you know me because I graduated from Blair Taylor High School about 30 years ago. Some of you also know that I committed my life to try and fight for several years for the people of Tremplow County, after being, well, starting back when I wanted to go to Algebra I when I was an eighth grader, and was opposed to, I had to go to the school board and beg for taking ninth grade campus when I was in eighth grade. And that's where it started sadly, and some of the same people that I had to argue and fight to be able to take Algebra I 30, well, 34 years ago, sadly are still taking control and trying to take away our rights to move ahead in this world. And I definitely stand in opposition to you trying to go ahead and take any rights away from the people. As I read the statement that was, the resolution that you're trying to read, it literally says that the representatives of the state of Wisconsin, in so many words, with all the experts that they have, have deemed, other than wash your hands, and you can wear the mask, which will help when somebody lobs a big wooey at you, but it ain't going to protect you, obviously, for the particulates, you know, and general air right now. I mean, again, it might help some if I suddenly spit when I use an S or a T or something, and a lot of stuff comes out, but most part it's not going to do any good. So I strongly discourage you from trying to take any more rights away from us, the My friend of 42 years was suffering depression, and he went to Mayo Clinic, where he traditionally would be able to go every two years or so to adjust his medication for bipolar, because of the mandate, because of the mandate of all COVID go up to St. Paul. I'm sorry, all depression and other things go to St. Paul, because it's only COVID now. They took away his medicines, gave him some other kind of medicine, in my, in my opinion, killed him. Healthy person just wanted to be seen for his depression. So, when you want to go ahead and trample the rights of someone that decides whether they want to have their business open or not open, or try and say whether someone should wear a mask or not, they see even corporate councils determined to not wear a mask, and it might even be his medical reason, he has that right, I'm glad that you guys exercise his freedom, allow him to exercise his freedom in the room here. Allow him to exercise his freedom in the room here. But that should be for all of us. We shouldn't have to have a law degree to go ahead and be given extra privileges. So, please. And some of you in this room, I'm lost in words. I'm kind of nervous, sorry. But again, I said it earlier. I literally just did in 2006 and 2010, my, every single day I made sure I went and walked the beat in Tremplow County. And something extremely important that was disturbing back then, when you guys said you needed a 210-bed jail. And it clearly proved, that was in 2000. Twenty years later, we don't have 210-bed demand. But nonetheless, when I walked the beat back then, talked to people all around the county, some county board supervisors would say to me, "Hey, Dorr, I don't know what they do in the Health Department. I don't even know what they do. As long as they go with my Highway Department votes, then I'm going to go with their votes." That mentality can't live, especially when you're taking away people's rights. Thank you for your time.
I think you made your point. Time's up though. Thank you.
Sorry?
I, I think your ti, your time's up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
We're going to go back to the phones again. I have a Tom Bushman?
Well, my name is, my name is Larry Huxstra. And I'm the past, oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to do phones, but since, please. Okay, okay.
One is Ted J. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thomas Bushman. I'm a U.S. Navy retired chief foreign officer. I live in Tremplow, Wisconsin. My comments are, I'll not address the violation of the constitutionality of the ordinance. I feel that's already been covered tonight. But what I would like to highlight is something that I think all of the board members should pause and take a look around. And that is, as I watch these meetings on TV and online because of my work, including this meeting tonight, you as board members sit there and consistently violate the current proposed ordinance. Take a look around you and tell me how many of you, according to this proposed ordinance, would be fined. How can you even consider passing an ordinance that you as board members can't even uphold the requirements for the duration of a short board meeting? I strongly encourage you to vote against this proposed ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Randy? No last name Randy? Doesn't say whether he's for or against.
Is this Randy?
Lost Randy. How about Mike Bushman? Or did we do that one? I thought we did that one. We did that one. We got one more. Shannon, Shannon Moats? Huh?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. Mike Bushman, Town of Dodge.
Mike, go ahead and state your comment.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Mike Bushman from Dodge. Uh, own and operate, uh, business for the last 40 years in the same township here. And, uh, my question to the board is, um, to ask the Health Department what the parameter for putting this mask mandate on? Have they ever actually been proven that they lower the spread of the virus? And more importantly, what is the parameter lift such a mandate? What gives a non-elected position right to make such a mandate as the mask mandate? How can you expect an untrained person, in the event the mandate is passed, to put themselves in harm's way to enforce such a mandate? And what mask is required in this mask mandate? Who inspects the mask? After, how? How after, or how often must the mask be changed? Uh, is the employer expected to provide these masks? And if so, are they considered personal protection equipment? Or just virus protectors? Which goes into another detail as an employer is my OSHA requirements. Are you aware of the tobacco that we're putting the county in liability? Because the masks don't pass the OSHA requirements. And OSHA requires that the employer change the mask on the employee quite often. And I challenge you to look into that yourselves to where that legality lies. Do you know what that requirement is? I challenge you to make sure you know before you vote on such a thing. What's next for this Health Department? Limes for not taking vaccines? Who knows? This very health official has not even done her job in the last three years. I personally know businesses, bars, restaurants, that have not seen her face for three years. So, if she was worried about our health in this county, she'd have done that job that she was hired to do. Not voted to do, hired to do.
Thanks. Shannon Moats? Shannon Moats online?
Shannon? Okay, I'm going to put you on speaker and I'll have you state your name and what town you're in.
Shannon? Blair, Wisconsin? Hello?
You can state your comment, Shannon.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, um, it just really bothers me that all this is going on. I mean, we are American citizens. That's one thing that people, that we've always held dear. I mean, people come to our country and they flock here from everywhere because they want to live the American dream. The American dream is freedom. It's our Constitution. It's our rights. And, and it seems like little by little, you guys are taking this away from us, from God, from church, from all these gatherings. You're destroying small businesses. For what? It doesn't make any sense. Like, these businesses are being destroyed. Um, it, it just, it really bothers me. And I just feel like this virus came from China. And we are looking more and more like China every day. From our votes being stolen to these mandates that are going on us right now from these leaders. And, and you guys, you guys live in this community. What are you doing to us? Let us be free. Let us choose what we want to do with our lives. And I, I guess that's just the bottom line. It's our choice. We are citizens of America. America is the land and the home, you know, the land of the free, home of the brave. Like, let us be us. Let us be free. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Bert Handros? Bert Handros?
Bert, still there? You can say your name and where you're from and then you can share your comments. He's on the phone. Okay, go ahead, Bert.
Oh, hi. Yeah, this is Bert Hodas. I'm a physician at the Mayo Clinic in Arcadia. I live in Arcadia Township. And, um, one of the, the board members or a couple of board members had suggested having a more formal hearing on this subject. And I think it's a good idea because there seems to be a enormous amount of passion that I'm hearing. I'm watching the meeting on the screen. And, uh, I myself feel I really respect. I, I am in favor of personal freedoms. However, I'm a physician and I talk to patients all day long. And there's, uh, a lot of genuine fear and anxiety about what, um, this pandemic is doing in our community and elsewhere. And I guess I would, I would say that I, as a physician, and I, I'm not an expert on COVID, but I read a lot. And I've learned a lot. And I do think some, I would like us to have as many measures as are needed in this, um, short term that will tamp down, um, the prevalence of this virus in our community. I'm mostly thinking about our community. I under, I, I, I do understand, uh, a lot of the speakers who are genuine, and I hear this in my own practice. Um, we have laws. We have, we have public health concerns as well. And we have laws about seat belts. We have laws about smoking in bars and so forth. And some of those things are, they're, they're long-term. And I actually am amazed that we actually have those laws and people embrace them. And there are benefits from them. Something that the Board of Health is talking about and what the, the board, the county board is discussing today has a fairly short horizon. We're talking about a, a shorter period of time. And I do think if it benefits the community even a small amount, I hope that they look into their hearts and they do their public service. I, like they, am a public servant and I take that very seriously. And I hope that the advice that I give to my patients as the, um, decisions that the board makes now or soon, um, will be something that they can look back at a year from now and feel like, okay, it was a hard decision. It was, it was heavily contested and people had genuine, genuine objections, but I did something good. I hope that that's how we look at it. My time is up. Okay, well, thank you. Thanks so much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Is that Randy on there yet? There's no last names. Randy still on there?
Yes, Randy is still on.
Okay.
Randy, you still there? Okay, you can say your name and where you're from and then you can say your comment.
Randy from Gilzeal.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the previous, uh, physicians' comments. They're, uh, I appreciate. Physicians' comments. Uh, a, a, a good, a good ethical perspective. And that's what we need in this time.
You gotta turn his background off or something.
Randy, can you turn your, uh, live stream off?
Sure.
It's echoing back to us.
He's losing time.
Just turn it, turn it all the way down.
Should I repeat what is said?
Nope, nope. Keep going. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, um. Okay, that's cool. I did a little study on this and, and the British study has proven that the masks have, uh, our little children, uh, stifles their oxygen intake. So, it's.
I think we'll have to give up on that one.
Tell him to just turn the TV down.
Ah, we're out of time anyway on that one. Let's, uh, let's go on to this Greta Dahl.
Greta? Greta? Hi, I'm going to put you on speaker and have you state your name and where you're from and you can.
I'll turn this on.
Go ahead, Greta.
Hello? Um, I hope you can hear me. My name is Greta Dahl. And, um, uh, I've been listening to this live stream and I had some comments that weren't really touched on. I decided to call. And my concern over this ordinance is the broad range of power that is afforded to an unelected official with the people. I'm specifically concerned with the language of that proposal. Um, take any action when deemed necessary. Issues, orders, advisories, recommendations, or mechan, uh, mechanicisms, whatever, in order to carry out his or her duties and responsibilities. That's Chapter 11 of the Public Health, uh, you know, 11.03.4. D and E. Now, to me, this says any and all powers without oversight. The broad power allows the current health officer along with any subsequent officer. You know, think about, who's coming after her, right? You know, somebody said Barbara, 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 but who's coming after her? This is, this is, we're going to set precedence here. So, in my mind, we really need to think about this. Um, uh, our current situation, yeah, we've got a pandemic. It's horrible, horrible for everybody. I mean, my neighbor just passed away just the other day from COVID, not with COVID. So, it's real. It's really real and everybody's afraid. You know, we've got controversy on masks, uh, uh, social distancing, whatever, whatever. It's not about that. It's about the power given to this person, this entity that is not, uh, not elected. We don't know who this person is. We don't know their political affiliation. We don't know anything about them. How were they hired? You know, somebody said, "We pay them." Okay. Who's "we"? Do I pay them for my tax dollars? I don't know. But I implore you to say no to this or send it back for revision because there is some very disturbing, broad-ranging, uh, language in this proposal. And, um, that's pretty much what I wanted to say along with what everybody else said. Uh, I think it's wrong. Um, I personally don't like to wear a mask because it can't breathe. It, it, I almost passed out at Woodman's. I almost passed out right down here at Randy's in Whitehall. It's horrible for some of us. And to be put under that kind of scrutiny on, on a, a threat of a fine, I'm, I'm just way against it. So, I vote no. I implore you to all vote no or send it back. And, um, I thank you all for your service and your time. And, um, thank you for letting me voice my opinion.
Kathy Johnson?
Hello, everybody. I wear a mask out of respect for everybody else, but I have asthma and I'm overweight, so it's, it's really hard for me to breathe. And I know one, the one good thing. The one good thing about a mask, um, is that I don't spend as much money when I go shopping. And that's about the only benefit of a mask. And like the RN said, uh, when you do wear a mask, it's not, it, it's not protecting you from getting the COVID. There have been people who haven't been out of their houses that I know and have got the COVID. Where they got it from, I don't know. But it's, the mask is not going to do anything. And I've been in, um, healthcare. I've worked in healthcare. We've had 18 residents. And we've went through SARS. We've went through H1N1. We're going through this and it's got to work its way out. And the biggest thing, and like the nurse said, wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. Do not touch your eyes. Do not touch your nose. Do not touch your mouth. And if you do, go wash your hands. It's common sense. And nowadays, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of common sense anywhere you go. And this is, this, when I heard about this, I'm like, I thought, I thought I was getting pranked again. Sometimes my son pranks me all the time. I mean, he pranked me and when he was going to have knee surgery, I didn't go. And so this, I go, "Yeah, right. Okay." And I walked away. And he goes, "Mom, I'm, I'm serious this time." And I'm like, "Really?" And I thought, "I have got to go to this because it's my responsibility to let people know that, you know, granted, you know, the COVID is serious. People are dying. And I, I, I know of people who have been hospitalized. But the thing is, if you do some research and you look into different things, But the thing is, if you do some research and you look into different things, I've read things from different doctors, and they've said that sometimes, like, oh, positive blood, you know, will, it will affect them, but not as hard. It won't, you know, whether that's true, I don't know. But we, you know, if you're concerned, research, do a little digging. But the thing is that the mask isn't going to protect you from getting COVID. And if your time is up, if the good Lord has it in His heart to take you, you don't have to have COVID to go. And that's about all I got to say. And my vote is a definite, definite positive no.
Larry Hoekstra? Larry Hoekstra?
Hi. I apologize for bursting in earlier, I didn't understand the protocol. My name is Larry Hoekstra, I'm the pastor of the Osseo Community Church, wanted to relate to you something that happened in our church just recently. Last week, we had an elderly man that passed away, he was 90 years of age, I don't know if he passed away with COVID or not. But interestingly, we had the funeral, and there was such confusion as to masks and mandates and what could happen and what couldn't happen. The thing that I noticed most egregiously, I would say, is this, is that no one really was focused on the family, it was always what's gonna happen with the COVID thing. The second issue is this, is that we have elderly people in our congregation, and some of them are now in nursing homes. I have people that are put in the hospital because of various illnesses. I cannot go into a hospital, I cannot reach out to them and visit with them in a nursing home or anything like that. And as much as I hate to say it, as I look around this room, many of you have the same hairdo that I do, which means that we're not all that far from the nursing home ourselves. Those individuals literally are confined to their room, their meals are being brought to them in their room, they have no social interaction. I talked to someone today who said, "The last time I could visit with my mother was through a window, we both had to have masks on, I had to have a nursing home assistant sitting with my mother to make sure we didn't get any closer than six feet." Is that what you really want for yourselves? Is that what you really want for the citizens of Tremplow County? I really don't think you do. And so I would really pray, do not go forward with this resolution. Don't do it, because the far-reaching aspects are much more than what will happen in this room. It affects people's lives, and it literally, I have people that, I ask them, "Are you afraid to come to church?" They said, "We've got to, we've got to come to church, we're so lonely, we've got to get out." So, please vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Bob Short? Bob Short? Carla Short?
Good evening. I am here to encourage you to oppose this resolution. My reasoning for that is that the Department of Health is, their capacity is to inform and educate.
Pull that speaker a little closer to you.
Sorry.
There you go.
Their capacity is to inform and educate. They have been informing the citizens of Tremplow County, they have been educating the citizens of Tremplow County, and what they have provided has not provided, has not caused the population to do as they wish. So, this is a way to make that happen through illegal manner. They can, if they can get you to vote yes and have, get the power to enforce these things and give fines and the like, then they can get the outcome they want, but there is nothing that will stop them, once this starts, from going on and trying to get more authority as an unelected official in department. And so, I very strongly believe that you should vote no. Thank you.
Is Bob Short your husband? Bob Short there?
No.
He's not, okay. Adam Norlander?
Hello, just wanted to thank you guys for taking all of this time to hear every single voice, that's really, really amazing. My name's Adam, I live in Strom, I'm the pastor of Harstime Church, we're currently meeting in Buffalo County. We purchased the Leva Fitness building, so hopefully, and God willing, we'll be moving in shortly, and so this affects us. I agree with most of the other people when they voiced their articulate opposition to this bill for religious freedom, for the constitutional infringements, for the vagaries of it, for all of those reasons. But my primary concern is the spiritual aspect, that we have, that we have people in our communities who are without God and without hope, who are living in despair and depression, and we have the message of Jesus Christ to ring out and to give them that in this time and in this season, for all seasons, seasons of tragedy and of hardship, and pandemic would be a season where you would want your churches open, to be coming alongside people and to be loving them and to be praying for them and to be supporting and lifting up one another, and that's what happens in churches. It isn't just a place where people go to practice their faith, but this is the body of Christ, this is the community, a family of believers, where we support each other and cry with each other and pray with each other, and that's what our community needs. So, I would just really encourage you to allow us, the religious freedom, to move forward in this, to move forward as we desire. We allow avenues, like everyone has said, in churches, we allow avenues for people to worship online, there's live streaming in all the churches, people wear masks if they choose to, but there's people that feel a deep conviction that we must gather together on the Lord's Day and to worship and to support one another, and those people should be allowed of the freedom to come and worship their God if they choose. Thank you.
Stephen James Seasor?
Good evening. I see this public health ordinance revision as a gross overreach of county power.
Pull that mic down for you.
You have to put the mic closer.
How's that?
Very good.
All right. I see this public health ordinance revision as a gross overreach of county power using a virus as an excuse. Government has repeatedly and regularly ignored the rights and the will of the people using COVID-19 as an excuse, and it's beyond unacceptable. If there were any real justification for this ordinance, nearly a year after the start of a pandemic, there'd be no opposition to the ordinance left, meaning if it were necessary, it was necessary in February. However, seeing as the county has come this far with relatively low impact, the virus, from the virus, this ordinance only serves as to use the virus as an excuse for control. There's already a vaccine being distributed, and in a short time, this will be no more than a memory, and it seems this board is scrambling for every ounce of control they can muster before this opportunity ends. New data released from New York State on Friday, December 11th showed that restaurants and bars accounted for less than 1.5% of COVID-19 cases over the last three months, September, October, and November. Restaurants and bars comparatively were much lower than spread linked to household gatherings, which accounted for nearly 75% of all cases, according to the same state data. It is impossible to follow any real scientific data and then claim that it is imperative for a health department to wield the power of writing citations over mask use or social distancing. The fact is that people are perfectly able to make their own decisions. Businesses are capable of setting their own policy, and people interacting with strangers generally do wear a mask and social distance of their own volition. Only when interacting with regular friends and family do people really abandon concern over mask and social distancing. And that is a completely natural human behavior that won't be changed by health department dictators wielding the cudgel of mask fines. You only need to look, excuse me, you only need to look at the data to see that this is true, places like New York and LA have had mask mandates enforced by fines and many other lockdown orders that haven't lifted since March. Those same places have had the same spikes in infection that you see everywhere else. There's been no clear delineation between places with mask mandates and places without since the start of the pandemic. Mandates didn't help there, they won't help here, and you clearly cannot police every aspect of people's lives, although the broad and vague language that's been proposed would indicate that you attempt to. This attempt at using a national tragedy to crush liberty from your citizens hasn't gone unnoticed, the people not only reject the attempt, but will be paying close attention to those of you who continue to push it. Thank you.
I guess we're going back to the phones again, Ashan Saboda?
We lost him. We lost Ashan.
We lost him.
Lost him? How about it? Amy Knapp?
Amy? Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker, state your name, where you're from, and leave your comment, okay? Go ahead, Amy.
Amy Knapp, San Antonio, Wisconsin. Um, I would just like to say you people are all for this, why are you not sanitizing? Why are you not sanitizing the podium and the, everything up front after each person? I mean, we clean our businesses, sir, you guys are cleaning yours. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Good point. Yep, yeah, it's a good point. Lindsay, nice, Niznik?
Lindsay? 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 I'm gonna put you on speaker now, state your name, where you are living, and leave your comment.
Hi, my name is...
Lindsay?
Yes?
Go ahead.
My name is Lindsay Niznik. I grew up in Hale Township and just live on the other side of Osseo in Bridge Creek right now. We do a lot of business in Osseo. I am just calling to, I appreciate this chance to talk, but I am a little concerned when I hear some of those people speaking about masks. The physician spoke, and I really appreciate his voice, but this is a lot more than just temporary relief from COVID. This bill would give any unelected official in the health department position the right to do whatever he or she is necessary to fight any communicable disease. This includes stress, influenza, whatever that one individual needs, necessary she can do. It would allow her the right to not just enforce masks, but also possibly enforce vaccines. She can take children away from families whose parents test deposits. She can shut down our schools, hair salon, our restaurant, she would have the power to shut down businesses. She can do anything that she deems necessary to fight a communicable disease. And my question would be, do we want our children and our grandchildren to grow up in a world where one person who is not representing the people would have the power to enforce, find people, to take them to court, to shut down their business, their restaurant, that they work, something that they pass on to their children, to shut it down? That's not the environment I want my children to grow up in. And that's all.
Thank you. Heather Batles? Heather Batless or Bethles or something like that? B-A-T-T-L-E-S? Is there Heather there?
Thank you.
Okay, Heather, go ahead.
Heather.
Um, hi, my name is Heather, I'm a bartender here in Whitehall, Wisconsin. I am from Georgia, which means I travel the nation quite a bit. Um, I just wanna say thank you to all the businesses that have pressed on during this pandemic, and my condolences to the businesses that have not been able to press on. I do understand that masks are preventative measure, and that shutting down businesses is not.
Heather, hold on a second.
Sorry?
Hold on just a second.
Sure.
Okay. You're not hearing the phone calls?
We're applauding the last speaker, I think it's those of us calling in that I can't hear, I think on the last call, they adjusted the volume, so I'll just connect it up.
Okay, but at least they do have sound in the Tremplow Room, so they can hear it, so it's us.
Let's go to a live one then.
She wasn't finished yet.
Did he get the...
Heather, you can continue.
Okay, um, tell me when?
Go ahead.
I may continue now?
Yes.
Can you hear or no?
Okay, so I understand that masks are all a preventative measure to keeping from any pandemic or virus to spread, but I know that shutting businesses down is not. I know that that will shut down my community, a community that has just only been important to me within the past year. It is a benefit to our community and to our nation. A vote against, a vote for shutting down a tiny little small-town business will shut down the community that I live in, that I am proud of. I have lost two loved ones to COVID, and it just makes me want to wear my mask more and wash my hands even more. I do love my customers, I love my boss, and I love my staff, and I love my community that I've just been only with for one year. Please do not shut down anymore. I am absolutely fine with continuing to wear a mask, but I believe that we can figure this out together. Thank you so much, that is all I have to say. And the pastor from Osseo, I'm so sorry for your loss.
Were you able to hear that, Sally? Were you able to hear that? Sally?
Got some now.
Oh, okay. Jessica, all I got is Jessica.
It should be good now, we had a battery go out on the wireless.
Okay. Jessica. What, not there? How about Mary Ludwig?
Hi, my name is Mary Ludwig, I'm from Minnesota, and earlier this evening, your county was mentioned as a destination place for people to visit. And I just wanted to say that I come to Tremplow County once a week, and I come to this county once a week because you have a wonderful sheriff who is not willing to infringe on my inalienable right to worship my God according to my conscience. And I just want the board to know that I come to this state because of the freedoms available in this county, and I will take my business to another place, and I just encourage you to vote no on this infringement of our rights. Thank you.
Hey, Sharon Andring? Or Shannon Andring?
Okay, Shannon, go ahead. Shannon?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead and say your name and your comment, please.
Okay, um, my name is Shannon, and I'm from the Whitehall area. I'm calling to say that I am opposed to the ordinance, reason being is that I understand the slowing down this virus, but a lot of it is common sense. The face masks that are currently being, supposed to be mandated, I guess, or they're working on it, do nothing. Anybody who's worked in the medical field knows that the proper mask when you go into people's rooms who are ill, proper PPE includes wearing a 95 mask. With that being said, I do have questions, because it is very vague, the statements that are in the ordinance, so... Um, how do you plan on enforcing that if someone were to call in and say that they don't think that, um, the business is following regulations like, what gives you guys the right, or whoever is going to enforce this, to come in and search and inspect and make sure that they're following regulations without a warrant? And also, where, who came up with the amount of the fines? And I just, none of it really makes sense, so I don't, it just, who's coming up with all this stuff, and what gives them the right to come up with this without it being properly, um, voted on or anything like that? Sorry, I'm very nervous, so, but, yeah, it just, who, where, who's coming up with the amounts of the fines? How do you plan on enforcing this if people decide to continue to give their small business or their consumers of these small businesses in homes the choice of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask? And what gives you that right to come in and inspect without a warrant? Are you going to get a warrant? And how are you gonna do that?
Is that everything, Shannon?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dave Sukla?
Are you ready? Okay. I'll have you say your name, and then we can, and you can make your comment. Go ahead, Dave.
This is Dave from Independence. Uh, I was gonna flush the toilet on you guys, but I was told not to. You, uh, have to be looking at your corporation council and asking them, why, why did he let this happen? These are clearly unconstitutional things you're talking about doing. You're putting a lot of burden on businesses in this county that don't deserve to happen. I don't know who brought this forward, but it should have been stopped at the corporation council end. I have another person here that wants to speak to you.
I'm gonna dial myself.
Uh, we have enough regulations on all the businesses already.
Who is this?
We don't need any more regulations.
Can you please tell us your name and where you're from?
What?
What is your name and where are you from?
Randy Smithick from Independence. Uh, we don't need any more regulations and everything else. There's a lot of struggling businesses around in this town and in the county that don't need this to happen. We have to vote this down, and that, that's the thing. We don't, we don't need any more regulations anymore, because we are, all our businesses are under regulation, and we don't need anymore. Thank you.
How about Randy Campbell?
Randy? I'm gonna put you on speaker. State your name, where you're from, and leave your comment. Go ahead, Randy.
Hi, my name is Randy Campbell. I live south of Arcadia on Highway 93, and first of all, I want to thank all of you on the board, who are obviously going through a pretty long dissertation tonight from people that have come on board with us in a relatively short time, so I think you can probably tell from that that we're pretty passionate about what's going on. A couple points I want to make. One would be across our country, if masking is so important and so effective, why have we been spiking and continually spiking over the last two or three months? Obviously, there's something that the masks are not providing for that to continue. And what are the unintended consequences of not wearing the mask properly? I think that was brought up before. Bacteria grows in a hot, moist environment, and certainly many people, when they pull that mask out of their purse or their back pocket, aren't necessarily following the guidelines and hardware properly. And I know I've, I've done a lot of studying in this time that we've been, uh, going through this pandemic to learn what is it all about? And there are many, many, many very smart people with more consonants behind their name than I have that have come out against our protocols and our methods of fighting this virus. We have never sheltered healthy people prior to this pandemic, and I think it's safe to say that this is probably not been the best protocol to use. Um, all of a sudden, we're all experts. I know there's a million things out there you can look at, but I think if you really look at qualifications and real science, uh, there's enough here to say that we are not treating this properly. Our media is constantly feeding us in anxiety and fear. Every night, you only hear about the pandemic. You hear about somebody dying, but let's put context to it. How old were they? What underlying causes might have affected that? Did they die of COVID or with COVID? Some of that would be helpful to know just what is the truth. We have a survival rate that hardly anyone, if anyone challenges, of 99.2%. And we're shutting down our country over this? I have a problem with the reach that we keep seeing on and on with this. I run a business, I'm losing $30,000 a month to just try and keep the doors open. It's not sustainable. And the unintended consequences of suicides, of people not getting their treatments and whatnot, all point to the fact that this just needs to run its course, like somebody else had said with swine flu, H1N1, and it will go away. A virus needs a host. When the hosts are gone, the virus is gone. Again, I appreciate your attention and the type of people that you are to listen to this, and I strongly oppose this. Thank you for your time.
Is that Jessica still on? Or did we lose her? No.
Is that the last one?
That's the last one I got. One more, and then we'll go back. Okay. Katie Pence?
Katie, we're gonna have to wait now. If you're too sleepy, just state your name. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Katie. I'm from Blair, Wisconsin. I am a teacher in the school district at Blair. I am also an employee of a bar restaurant in the area, and have multiple bar restaurants. And here is my, uh, major concern that I'd like to point out. I guess there's two different things. Um, one is the, um, the, uh, expansive power that's being given out by this, is that there's no stop time to, um, when there would be an end to the, um, capacity that's given to whatever elected official is able to make whatever, um, whatever ordinance deemed necessary, as in your, your ordinance. Uh, the second thing that I have to point out is that all of these places that are small businesses that are thriving or trying to just make it through right now with, uh, you know, the sale of food or beverages or whatever, whatever else may be, is that everybody that's attending these or occupying these spaces has a choice whether or not they choose to go there. And so, uh, punishing people for making a choice as to whether or not they want to go to these places, I think is just an incredible infringement on people's rights. It's one thing to require a mask when you go into an essential place of groceries or gas, whatever it may be, but when you're talking about people making a choice as to whether they want to go out and get a cheeseburger, or they want to go out and have a beer, um, and then to fine them for that, or to fine the owners of these restaurants or these businesses simply because they're offering that and people have a choice to go in there, um, is an incredible infringement on our rights as Americans, and, uh, something to highly consider when you're considering punishing people for making a choice whether or not they want to go into an establishment or not. Um, again, something to think about when you're talking about what's necessary and what's not, and what you're gonna punish people in for what's not. I thank you all for listening tonight to the comments, and, um, I hope that you seriously consider what you're thinking about punishing people for, and what kind of limitations you're putting on in the language of the contracts that you're looking at. Thank you very much.
Oh, one more phone. Kevin Adams?
Kevin?
Okay, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. I'll have you say your name and your comment. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, hello?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Kevin Adams. I'm from the city of Arcadia. I'm, um, uh, speaking in opposition to this ordinance. I always, do you guys still hear me?
Yes, yes.
I'm speaking in opposition of this ordinance. I believe, uh, on the, like the other speaker, it's illegal in so many ways, but I'm also speaking on the religious aspect of it. Um, I, I live in the city of Arcadia, but I'm also right now attending, uh, Bryan Baptist Church in Gilsville underneath Pastor Mark Stonifer, as my pastor has said. Um, this health officer, as this draft is written, if it's signed into law, could come into our church and, uh, who knows what she could do to our church? She could, uh, shut us down, she could harass the pastor. What, what is she gonna, what is this barber lady gonna do if she enters our church? Um, that's what really worries me. With that, I will, uh, pass my, I will pass. Thank you very much for your, uh, time.
Thank you.
Okay, back to in-person ones. Donald Thompson?
Are we still going to be accepting phone calls?
Oh, this is, it's almost 10 o'clock already. If somebody calls, just have them hold.
We asked, we ended, or isn't that...
Well, no, we got people...
Did we end that?
If, uh, I just assumed it ended. I'll announce that we're gonna end the phone calls, and hopefully they'll end it.
Do people who call in just say yes or oppose or no?
Yeah, you can, you can call in and say one way or the other, whether in favor or opposed, it doesn't matter. You don't have to speak. But anyway, uh, Donald Thompson? Donald Thompson here? Is this Donald?
Ashan Saboda? Who are...
He's on the phone. We already talked.
That should be people are... Kelly Wirths?
Kelly.
Kelly Wirths?
You're still on the phone once. Those, when they wrote the comment over on the side there, that meant they were on the phone.
Oh, they're on the phone, they're on the phone already?
Kelly's coming.
Oh, those are ones that, okay.
Are we, are we accepting the phone now?
I think what he wants to do is just...
See if they'll just vote.
In favor or against.
Or... Kelly Wirths? Speak into the mic there.
Good evening, and thanks for listening to me here. I don't have any rehearsed speeches, but I'm from Osseo. Kelly Wirths is my name. I'm just gonna share, I'm married to an immigrant from a former communist country. And you've heard a lot of different points of view. She is absolutely terrified, and I have almost a fight with her every day because she's scared to death what's happening in this country, with overreach and everything else, what we've been through in the last four or five years. And I just talked to her, because I was supposed to be home by 8 o'clock. Is it okay? Are you gonna be safe? She came from Russia. In that country, if you speak out, you go to jail. You say the wrong thing, you go to jail. I said a prayer before I come in here, and I want to share this with you, all you.
That's your first name?
And I was told by everybody I talked to not to say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. It's been floated out about health issues. You know, the mask thing, you know, you've heard 20, 100 people say that. There's been health issues floated out there about certain different things being crisis. You got a pandemic right now. Is the next pandemic, somebody deciding that? Our Second Amendment's gonna go away because it's a health hazard to my son, who's 10 years old? I've heard that floated. Don't say that in there. My wife worries. You should sell every gun you got, because the Democrats are gonna come and get them. That is not funny. It scares me to death. I'm 54 years old, I'm gonna share this with you. My mother's in the ground. I was raised in southern Wisconsin. I moved to Idaho, I was raised out there, came back, I spent most of my life out there. When I was a small child, we had four of, I was one of 11, third oldest. After number four, she had them all at home. I remember as a small child, so that would mean I'd have been about seven, a health worker from the state of Wisconsin down in Kenosha County coming to the farm where we lived, and my mother chasing her out of the house because she was telling her, oh, we'll take you to jail if you don't do this and that, because she didn't approve of us having our kids born at home. I'll never forget that if I lived to be 104. And my mother was quite a woman, she wasn't nice when she was upset. But the point is, I wanna abbreviate. I'm not here to alienate you, I'm not trying to threaten anybody about guns, but I'm saying you, unelected officials, that kind of power? And there's no language in there saying, there's a lot, I swear, everyone in here's got family. You're not, if you didn't care about your community, you would not be here. They wouldn't want you to be here at quarter to 10 at night, listen to us pontificate if you weren't good people. So while you may not like my opinion, please consider it. And like I said, I want, we'll finish it up with my wife. She's absolutely terrified of what's happening in this country because of overreach and the way we disregard this law, but we do that law. It is frightening. And I'm not from Russia, I was born here, but it scares me to death, too. And thank you so much for letting me say my piece.
I would say one more phone call, then we're gonna cut the phones off, because it's just about 10 o'clock. It's Cops Asala.
Go ahead. Cop?
Not there?
No.
Michael Moga?
Yes. My name is Mike Moga. I'm 41 years old. I live in Independence, Wisconsin. Today, I went around getting signatures. When's the last time any of you went around every single business in your town and talked to the people? When's the last time you, who aren't listening up there, that you talked to every single business in your town? Every single one? I had about 85, 90%, rate of people that were willing to sign, the rest were scared to death of their last name being on a list in here, being shunned, or being pulled out or whatever, fired. Some of them work in this building, and they were afraid, afraid that their name would be on some list. All those businesses that I talked to today that were more than happy to sign are scared. They're small businesses, they're barely surviving, and you guys want to give unlimited power to an unelected official? I didn't elect her. Did any of these people in here elect them?
No.
None of them did. You guys picked this person, we had no say. And now this person's gonna have whatever say they want, go into anybody's homes or businesses and fine them? Because you guys hired this person? I'm not trying to disrespect any of you guys, but that is not right. That is against my, my liberties, my freedoms. I'm an American just like you guys are. I believe red, just like you. I was afraid to come and speak tonight, because I don't have a filter. I was afraid that one of these guys here with the cuffs would take me for an overnight stay. But now I'm, I'm just, I'm up here shaking because I can't believe that this is even on the table. It, it's disgusting. Who would even come up with something like this? Why? Why? I, I don't understand. Where, everybody is trying to survive. This here doesn't do shit. Sorry for my language. It doesn't. It doesn't. You can, you've heard health people say, say it tonight, Mrs. Borke, for crying out loud. I'm not trying to disrespect any of you guys, but that is not right. That is against my, my liberties, my freedoms. I'm an American just like you guys are. I believe red, just like you. I was afraid to come and speak tonight 'cause I, I don't have a filter. I was afraid that one of these guys here with the cuffs would take me for an overnight stay. But now I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm up here shaking because I can't believe that this is even on the table. It, it, it's disgusting. Who would even come up with something like this? Why? Why? I, I don't understand. Where everybody is trying to survive. This year doesn't do shit. Sorry for my language. It doesn't. It doesn't. You can, you've heard health people say, say it tonight, Mrs. Bork, for crying out loud. The paper ones only last an hour and a half. Are you gonna have, is the county gonna supply them? Or, or is the health official gonna come out and give you a warning? I doubt it. I strongly urge you to think about these things. Everybody's hurting here. COVID sucks. It's a real thing. We all know that. We're all trying to do our best. And now I hope you guys can do yours. Thanks.
Uh, is it Mike or Nick Van Halen? Van Hayden? Van Hayden is it? I think it's Nick, but I'm not sure. Nick Van Hayden? How about Lloyd Schultz? Nothing else. Lloyd Schultz? Uh, Danny Framstead?
I guess I ain't got much more than, I ain't got much more than Restem had to say other than, uh, the only other thing, trying to do this on a countywide level. You say, you know, we put restrictions in Tremplow County. Well, the people don't like them restrictions, you know. I, I don't like what's going on in, in businesses in Pigeon or you close them. I'll go to York. I'll go to Northfield, you know. It's pointless, you know, if you're just gonna do Tremplow County because, and we do business, uh, you know, a lot of places we go, if we don't like what's going on in a certain store, we just don't go there. So you're gonna put, you know, you got the potential of putting our businesses in a bad spot and not really accomplishing anything because, you know, say us in Pigeon, we're, we're gonna go to York anyways. Or we're gonna go to Northfield. We go to Black River. Well, now all of a sudden, rather, you know, we're in, in the same community with our people, now we're going further away into a different community. I guess that's, you know, that's about the only thing I got to add that I didn't really hear, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. David Estenson? David Estenson?
Good evening. Thanks for, uh, for listening. So, as a founding of our country, we were, our founders gave us two of the most important founding documents ever created in the entire history of the world. The Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. So, the, the declaration is, uh, has been quoted already tonight. I won't go through the, the part that I already had written down. But I did want to, uh, highlight the end of it. Those of you who may not have, have read it, the end of it. The, the founders knew that the, that the freedoms that they were laying out, that they were fighting for, they're about to fight for, were worth dying for. It, the, the end of the constitution, or the declaration ends with this. "With firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor." They knew they were signing their death warrants when they signed the Declaration of Independence. Because freedom is worth fighting for. The Constitution, the, the, the declaration is the why we have our freedom. The Constitution is how we preserve that freedom. And we've, we've heard that, um, quoted tonight too. I'll, I'll, I'll skip, uh, what I had, had. And I will get to the First Amendment. I don't know how many of you know, but the First Amendment has five rights that are enshrined. They're not given to us by the Constitution. They are protected by the Constitution. Those five are the freedom of speech, the freedom of religion, the freedom of assembly, to peaceably assemble, the, the freedom to petition our, um, government for redress of grievances, and the freedom of the press, okay? Um, this ordinance, this, this proposed, uh, resolution, it limits the power, limits the, the freedom of, of assembly, of gathering. It tramples on those rights that have been enshrined in the Constitution. Now, I don't know how many of you know me. I was a law enforcement officer here in Tremplow County, okay? I still have a lot of friends in law enforcement and in Tremplow County. I do not claim to speak for anyone specific, but I can tell you after talking to them, I want to give them a voice. They're on our side opposing this ordinance, this resolution. They know the freedoms that this takes away. And obviously, I, if you can't tell how important that this, these freedoms are to us and how passionate we are about it, I, I don't know what more is going to convince you tonight. So the bottom line is, freedom may be dangerous. The founders knew that. It may be dangerous, but it is worth it. It's worth preserving. Please vote against it. Thank you.
Michael Hauser? Michael Hauser? Okay, uh, Maximilian Beatty? Or Maximilian Beetle?
Hello. My name is Maximilian Beetle. I'm 17 years old. My parents own a small restaurant in Centerville, Wisconsin. And I got about 80 of those petition signatures that you have been hearing about all night tonight. The reason that I am here, 17 years old, it's a school night. I want to be talking to a girl. I'm here talking to you guys. The countless, right, the countless freedom-loving patriots in my county and I would like to share this message. I just wanted to say, I wanted to kick this whole thing off, but I, that I speak, I think I speak for all of us when I say that all we want to do is protect the most vulnerable and at-risk populations in our society, regardless of how we fall on the political spectrum. Unfortunately though, as many of us know, tyranny has never come to fruition in America without good intentions behind it. I am not here to talk about the validity of wearing a mask. I'm not here to talk about the validity of social distancing or doing that protecting, as I stated earlier. No one is, and I'll prove it. Every single one of you, as the previous callers restated, are fine with Corporal Counsel, Mr. Rick Niemeyer up there. Nothing against the gentleman, not wearing a mask. You're, you're completely fine with that. You're completely fine with mandating masks for the first five minutes and the last five minutes that you're in my parents' business, right? But what gives you the authority to do that? You have to change the law in order for you to have the authority to do that. And I don't see the law saying, we're just gonna make you wear a mask for the first and five, first five minutes and the last five minutes. That's not what it says. It says that if that doesn't work, you can shut my parents' business down. You can mandate a vaccine. That, that is not the same thing in any stretch of the imagination. And what I think my constituents are disappointed in is the fact that you guys used our best judgment and our big-heartedness and the big-heartedness of my liberal colleagues, you use that to exploit us, to take advantage of us and to try and pass this resolution which would shut down my parents' restaurant. Answer me this question. How can I go to a vape store? How can I go to a liquor store and I'm not allowed to go to school in person? Let me remind you of something. As these people have already stated before me, you have already committed things that could be considered treasonous, that could be considered unconstitutional to these people. The reason that I'm here is I'm telling you that we will not take any more of it. Is that cool? Can I have Mike's time?
Sure.
All right.
Is that that Michael Hauser?
Yeah, Michael Hauser. All I'm saying is, it doesn't make sense that you can't go to church, but you can go to a liquor store. How does it make sense that you can go to QuickTrip or the grocery store, but you can't eat in my parents' restaurant? You have the same threat posed to you in both places. That brings me to the other reason that I'm really here today, though. I'm here to remind you that regardless of how you people vote tonight, the people of Tremplow County will uphold our oath to the Constitution. We will not bow our heads to your new or current unconstitutional orders. We will not let our economy falter unnecessarily any longer. And finally, we will not fail to hold you accountable for this treason. So I implore you, if you care about the mental and financial health of your constituents that elected you and your positions in the chairs that you have moved across the room this evening, I compel you to uphold your oath as well. Thank you.
Tracy Warner. Tracy Warner?
Hi, my name is Tracy Warner. I grew up here. I moved away for several years and I've been back here for the last couple of years. I currently rent business space inside of a store in River Falls, Wisconsin, which has been through this ordinance and it was, did not go in the favor of the people. I have been hurt severely as a small business person this year. I'm in art and retail. And I have been snuffed out. It has been a very depressing year. And I am speaking right now for all of the people that I have talked to in this community that I grew up in who are similarly hurting and afraid to speak, just like I was in River Falls because I knew there'd be a target on my back in the business space that I rent. You don't know how many people didn't show up tonight, but that I've spoken to in this community, good people, people I grew up with, friends, people who are employed here, people who have small businesses, who turn away because they're afraid of what will happen to them. That is wrong. That is very wrong. Small businesses are dying and I can tell you that firsthand. And I have nothing to lose because my own self-employment is dying. And I'm watching it all around here. And I don't know why it's happening. I have nothing else to say. This wasn't prepared, but I'm tired of it. So many people left tonight, in the hallway even, because they knew somebody who owned a business. They have a parent that, they didn't wanna, sorry, Mom and Dad, but they've watched this. Pocketbooks are dwindling. Depression is real. This is what's happening. Listen to your community. I won't be living here much longer, I hope. And that's why I'm not afraid to speak, because I know there won't be a target on my back, because I'm not gonna work here, God willing. So I'm praying for this community that I grew up in, that you would listen to your community. There's so many small businesses. There's so many people in the school system, the hospital. There's so many people right now that are masked up, that are sick, that literally have told me. I have talked to so many people as I walk my dog, my parents' dog. How is it going? I feel sick every day. I wear a mask all day and I feel sick. Kids are throwing up from wearing sports, masks in sports. I can't even imagine. I played basketball here. I sweat my ass off. How in the world is this happening? This is not health. In the name of health, public health, what is this? That's it.
Rachel, Rachel Chance? Rachel Chance?
Hi, my name is Rachel Chance. I was born and raised in Tremplow County. I live in Blair, Wisconsin.
Speak closer to the mic.
My name is Rachel Chance. I was born and raised in Tremplow County. I live in Blair, Wisconsin. I have two young children and I am a daughter to a beef farmer. This ordinance is unconstitutional. It is not to be agreed with if any of you abide by the Constitution. I encourage you to read the Constitution and to abide by it. You are the voices of the people. And I encourage all of you to call your people and listen to your people that are in your townships. Listen to them. Don't form your own opinions. You are here to represent the people in your township. That is your job. That is why they elected you. Listen to your people, read the Constitution, and I will pray for all of you. Thank you.
I have a couple more. I'm not sure if they're hearing that. Lloyd Schultz? Lloyd Schultz? Uh, Nick Van Hayden? They might have left. Is there anybody out there I missed? I have a Sean Saboda? Uh, and a Donald Thompson? Nobody in the hall? Michael Hauser? They only used a minute of your time. You can relink this. If you want to add a minute, you'll be the last one.
He says no.
No? Okay. I don't have any more unless I miss them. Did I miss anybody? Okay. I don't have any more seats. Is there anybody on the phone that we missed?
I'd like to say something. I know I gave my minutes away. I came down here from Eau Claire County. I used to be a resident of Tremplow County. And what I'm seeing happening right now, I mean, I come down here weekly to eat, to get away from Eau Claire County. They put their ordinance on the back burner for right now, whatever that means. I know three people in the past three weeks, women, that are businesswomen that have committed suicide over this. Do we want this? Like, seriously? That's what I have to say. I have children. I have seven grandchildren. What are we gonna tell these children? How are they gonna be raised? I mean, they're not. They're not gonna have a life. Come on, people, think about this. I, I just, I, I can't wrap my mind around this. This has gotta stop. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. I'm gonna take all the participants, uh, coming down and spending your time. That's what this is all about, is county people and they're doing their job, just coming and voicing your opinions. At this time, we'll turn it over to discuss, or motion from the county board to go on with that resolution. It's, uh, item D. See, it didn't. Yes? Yeah, you gotta read that motion.
Look, I have a question. I'm gonna propose that we either take it back to the health committee, let them have another meeting, and we either, um, table this until we get more information. Should I do that now or after it's read?
You can do it either time. It's fine. And I think what you want to do is you want to refer it back, refer it back to committee.
Yes, I want to refer back to committee and I have several reasons. First of all, we've had quite a few complaints tonight.
Why just make a motion to refer it back and get a second?
Okay, just, okay. I'll make a motion to refer it back to council, or to a health committee and then, uh, bring it to a next board meeting or.
Second to that motion, seconded by Jeannie.
Now you can explain if you want to.
Okay, I, a couple of reasons I want to. Uh, we've had lots of accusations tonight that we're breaking the law and taking people's rights away. I don't know, if you feel confident on commenting on those now, or would you like to look through some of the information?
Oh, I keep prepared just in case, so, that's what I do. I anticipate it.
Yeah, okay, but that was one of my concerns that, that you have a chance to look through and are we breaking any laws? And secondly, when it comes down to this, um, I think if we make an ordinance, we have to have consistency in enforcing that ordinance. And Mr. Ziegler and I walk into a store, both of us unmasked. The owner likes him, dislikes me, turns me in for the $25 fine. You know, that, that could very well happen in this situation. Another one, I was saying, all of a sudden, a 14-year-old walks into the store unmasked. Are we gonna give that 14-year-old a $25 fine? You know, what, what I'm saying is, there are things I think that need to be thought through. And the other one that I thought of is, all of a sudden, somebody walks in the QuickTrip not wearing a mask from out of state. We don't know who they are. We want to turn them in to fine them. Can you see approaching that person? Can you give me your name and address so that we can give you a $25 fine? You know, I, I, I see some things that have to be taught, thought through. It's different when a police officer gives you a citation rather than a citizen turning in another citizen for breaking a rule. So those are some reasons, I think, some things need to be worked out in further detail.
Well, and the reason I seconded is, what? I don't think my mic works.
Yeah, it should.
The, the reason that I, um, feel obligated to, um, second his, um, motion is because I've, I feel The reason that I feel obligated to second his motion is because I feel like I need to do a lot more research, but one thing I really wanted to quote was, Sheboygan County went through this, a very similar thing, and I was really impressed with what the county administrator said, and he made this comment, he said, "In Sheboygan County, eventually it came down to weighing the benefits of the ordinance against the benefit of residents being kind and civil and pulling together to fight coronavirus. With all the uncertainties surrounding COVID-19, people are understandably hurting, frustrated, and fearful," Payne said. And this proposed ordinance was contributing to that angst, and this certainly wasn't our intention. So I think this ordinance needs to go back because there's so much, for me, I need clarity. You know, sometimes you may think I'm like, you know, this flitting around butterfly that doesn't pay attention, but I really need clarity. And there is so much uncertainty written in this ordinance that I feel like we have an obligation to all the people who live in this county to be clear and concise in what we're talking about, and I feel we're not at that point yet.
Mr. Seitzer?
My comment is, if Barb feels this is important, by the time we go through whatever we're going to do, it's going to be too late for her.
Right.
You want to speak on that part? I think...
We're in a, we are in a situation, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, we're in a situation that is constantly changing. The end of November, we were driving, we had four deaths in five days. Right now, everything, both the testing and the positives are down, but we are still running around 40%. I don't know what it's going to be like in another month or two months or whatever. It might be better, maybe we'll have the vaccine in our hands and can move forward and towards conquering this, maybe we won't. That's all, I, honestly, if I could predict the future, I'd use it on lottery tickets.
But I think our public, from what I heard tonight, want to know which direction we're going and not three months from now.
I agree with that. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We want to vote. We're going to hear it. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Recognize me, please?
Yes, Sally.
Okay. Yes, there's a lot of emotion, obviously. I have never, either as a reporter, as an elected official, seen such a strong turnout from the public. Public interaction, public input is mission critical to government, especially local government. I have heard things that have given you pause, but I also think that it is important that we make sure we understand why we're doing what we're doing and that it is on point for timeliness. We do, as a county, need to be working on having a pandemic response plan because we got caught off guard, as did pretty much every municipality in the nation and the world this year. But as I look over this ordinance, this proposal, there are a few things that I'm not clear on as well. And I think that we need, in all fairness to the process, to governance, and to everybody, I think we do need to send it back to committee and really hammer it out a little bit better. I would invite the members of the board to participate virtually, again, a reminder, you know, virtual meetings helps reduce the spread. But I think that we do need to make sure that we have considered all of the risks and possible slippery slopes that this might contain down the road. Because once it's in place, it's a little bit more complicated to undo. And I certainly would rather hammer it out a little bit more. I've taken a lot of notes and a lot of, I've had people texting me their thoughts, and I think that in order to do right by the people who've expressed concerns, but also to the process, I would like to see this go back to the Board of Health and just really beat the crap out of it, make sure we know what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Mr. Ziegler?
I made that suggestion about returning this to the Board of Health for revision at the beginning of this meeting, and I, hearing, I've heard three people now more or less echo my thoughts. I'd just like to, if that's the action, that's under consideration now, returning it to me, if it is. I guess I'd like to point to, I've got these highlighted, now, I read 19 or 20 emails, I talked to a half a dozen people, I read the two letters, or three letters, at least two that came in, that were distributed in our mailboxes. And the predominance of opposition to this comes from this section, it's called Local Health Officer's Authority, and it is, it is, it is one of the main, it is the main part of the revisions, it is part that Rick underlined, is in addition to the existing ordinance. And I think what people are really getting angry about is things like promptly take all measures, and so forth and so on, take any actions, issue any orders. That kind of verbiage is guaranteed to get some people angry. And I would urge the Board of Health to look very carefully at that section, either revise those or delete those, take a better look at the existing already departments, which spells out the current powers of the local health officer. And I guess one other thing, I have restrained my, so that's my suggestion for this. I would like to vouch for Barzak, I've heard a lot of people from over here take, make totally unjustified accusations at our health officer. I have worked with her and known her for seven and a half years, she's a hardworking, thoroughly dedicated professional person, she has been doing her damnedest for the last 10 months to get through this, and calling her names is, is, it's a little bit more, almost more than I can take. That's all.
Any other comments? Rick?
I would, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but my thoughts are, if this goes back to committee, no matter how we delude it, or how we come through with it, the issue is, I believe, nobody wants the fine. And no matter what we do to it, it's going to have a fine with it. So I don't think it does us any good to go back to committee. I think it should be voted on and either passed or settled tonight.
Okay. Any other? Mr. Toll?
Yes, my question is, is there any way that, for the sake of everybody that showed up tonight, can vote on this ordinance? And if they need to rewrite it and keep the fines part out of it and all that stuff that got everybody all upset, rewrite the ordinance to a different chapter? Is that possible, if we could do that, to vote on, accept or reject this one tonight and take it back to the board?
I'm not sure, correct me if I'm wrong, I think if you vote it down tonight, it's a dead issue.
Is that correct?
Essentially, I mean, it can eventually be brought back in a different form, but I guess one thing I just, since I, I just want to make everybody understand, the number four section that Mr. Ziegler was referring to, letters A, B, C, and D, those are, those are authority powers that Bar, the local health officer already has. State law grants those, authority grants it, those are actually reproductions of statute in the ordinance. So the A, B, C...
They're already illegal.
What, please, thank you. Those are already granted to the local health officer via state statute. So we're not giving her any additional power under number four, just, I just wanted to point that out. Those are already granted, so even if this ordinance were not to pass, she still has that authority under state law. The, really the main issue under this is any enforceability provisions. That is, that cannot happen without a local ordinance. And so this, this ordinance incorporates state law and then adds the enforcement provision. I just wanted to clarify that for purposes of this particular ordinance. That would be the last section, is it number seven?
Seven.
Seven, yeah.
The only thing under number seven that is, that is, the portions under number seven that can't happen unless an ordinance is passed, is letter A, B, and the first half of C. Everything else is already by state statute authorized and she can do it.
So can I clarify that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Part of the, some of the parts that people are objecting to, our state is already state law.
Correct.
Got that.
Yes, Ms. Madder?
My understanding and what I tried to sort out today is that Wisconsin State Legislature versus Palm, which was the Supreme, Wisconsin Supreme Court hearing that was heard, a decision that was made early on when Governor Evers, or when the legislature objected to Acting Secretary Palm's health orders that were put in place. And those had a criminal, and Rick, you can correct me if I'm wrong, had a criminal aspect to them, like you could be charged with whatever, it wasn't a civil ordinance, it was a criminal ordinance. So basically, the only way that any of these, any of 253, 25303?
25203.
25203 can be implemented is via, without being challenged by the Supreme Court again, would be via having an ordinance, which is why I'm guessing many counties have added some kind of ordinance fine to their Chapter 11. But I feel like there's still so much, I mean, there was so much that I had to sort through just to understand this myself, and I'm no lawyer, but there's tons of, and I think, Rick, it might be time for you to chime in and talk about what 25203 is and what that state, Wisconsin state statute has been in effect for 39 years, which gives health departments power and authority, they have duties that they have to do. And I think so much confusion, this isn't about a mask ordinance, you know, there is a mask ordinance still in effect, the Supreme Court has not made a decision on that ordinance or on that yet, a hearing was held November 16th, the Wisconsin Supreme Court has not yet rendered a decision on that. They heard oral arguments, and as I understand, Evers' mask ordinance ends on January 19th of 2021, so will he extend it? I don't know. But what we're talking about tonight has nothing to do with wearing a mask, a mask ordinance. So maybe you might want to give a little ABC of what the legal issues are.
Just getting my notes here.
Rick, do you want 252?
Actually, I got it right, but thank you though, I appreciate that, so. All right, so 252, just kind of a little bit, 25203 is the, let me get it here, that is the local health officer statute, 25202 is the State Department of Human Services at the state level. The decision by the Supreme Court in the Palm case addressed the issues under 252.02, which were the state actors. The two statutes are different, but the legal community believes that you can take, you can analogize things from the Palm decision to the local health officer's statute, but that doesn't mean that it automatically will apply, it's not precedent, I guess is where I'm going with it. So that's why there is a lot of discussion that 25203 is largely untested in the court system because no, there is no case law out there that defines what the parameters of the responsibilities and duties and authority is. So this ordinance, when it was drafted, used the statutory language because as of right now, that is the only guidance that is out there for anybody to attempt to do anything. So that's why that lang, particular language was used in that section number four, because at some point, the court's going to have, at some point, the court's going to have to weigh in, and until they do. Now, there are three Supreme Court decisions that are pending right now with, on Supreme Court, we're waiting for decisions on. One is whether or not the reduced capacity, whether that is a valid act by any local health officer. Closing schools, that's the Dane County one, we're closing schools, whether or not they have the authority to do that. And then the third one, oh, it's the multiple, issuing the multiple health emergencies. Typically, they're only good for 60 days and they're not supposed to be able to renew them without legislative action. That wasn't done, the governor renewed them successively, and so that is the third one that we're waiting for a decision on. So some guidance will be provided once those decisions come out. Will it be, this will tell us what we can or can't do? No, but it'll at least give us a little bit of a guidance as to what their, what the authority is under a local health officer. The Dane County one, that it was specifically a local health officer order, the other ones were all at the state level. So again, I'm kind of talking in circles because we know some, but we don't know a lot, and that's what these court cases, we're hoping to get a little guidance on. I don't know if that's where you're talking about, Jeannie, I'm going to...
Well, yeah, it is, because I think, which is why I'm strongly encouraging us to refer this back to the Board of Health, because there are so many things out there that could impact any decision that we make tonight. Whatever decision we make tonight is final, and as you said at the beginning of this meeting, since we didn't, this wasn't scheduled for a public hearing, it was just scheduled with less than 24 hours for public comment, any decision we make tonight could be overturned or could be challenged. So I, you know, this has been my problem with managing this pandemic from the get-go, there's a thousand rules in a thousand different districts, and Wisconsin doesn't even have, you know, consistent rules and regulations within the counties. You know, Clark County has an ordinance violation, Pierce County, Douglas County, I can't think of all the other counties, but Milwaukee County is talking about raising their fine to $20,000. I mean, it's all over the board. So we need, we need to have clarity, which is why this has to come back. I'm not worried about a month from now because, you know, we're not going to have the vaccine until April, May, maybe, and then there are going to be issues about who gets the vaccine and when, and, and I, you know, I just think there is so much uncertainty at this point. We, you know, we just need to know what we're doing.
What the hell, we don't know what we're doing, Madison don't know, don't know nothing either.
Well, and one of your...
They ain't going to get the vaccine, we ain't going to get it for a while because we're, we voted Republican in this county. That's all politics.
Well, we also have your...
It's all politics, ma'am.
I'm sorry to be just speaking out here, but we also have your resolution that you want to send forward to Madison to ask the legislature to give us some guidance in this. We, you know, we are a mess, we are a hot mess.
They haven't done it, they haven't met all of it.
No, they haven't, that legislature hasn't met since last March.
Paying them for doing absolutely nothing for a whole year. You had a comment, George?
Oh, she's, sorry. She's a little apologist. Sorry. I can take it.
I guess, what the, what Jeannie has said, and Tim, and Chuck, and Rick for that matter is, you know, we don't know what we're talking, what we're dealing with here. I think Rick has tried to, to give us the overall picture in terms of what the public health officer's duties are. I think there are some things we can say for certain that we're not dealing with, and I think Sally had, and I don't know if you were around for this, Sally, but you had said that in none of your career have you seen anything quite like this happen at the county board, either as a reporter or as an elected official, but there was actually a crowd much larger than this, considerably more vociferous, and, believe it or not, and back at a time when we could pack the walls of the courthouse and the hallway and going up the stairs, and it was Donnie Kloss of much favored memory had just brought a suggestion to outlaw deer shining in the county. And within 24 hours, even shorter time period than these folks, the county boardroom was packed, and the public made it very clear that this is not something that, the little kids in dresses with flowers and grandmas talking about family things, and it was like, okay, we get it, we get it, you know, we're not even going to talk about it. But the other thing we do know is that counties... talk about it. But the, the other thing we do know is that counties are given authority by the state to do things. We resolve in resolutions, which indicate what our, what our desire is, and then the staff that we hire to do that, the boards and the agencies and the, and so forth, carry out those resolutions. By ordinance, we, we create stronger regulations, which, which then are enforced by a zoning department perhaps, a land conservation department, a health department, a human services department. And, and all of these people are empowered by the, the power from the state, which we, we don't wield the power, we, we act as the responsible agents of the state in Tremblow County. And I think what we do know is that Barb is not power hungry and desiring to take children from their homes, or keep people from worshiping, or Barb, are you, I mean, is that, is that what you're interested in doing? Or, or for the-
She doesn't have the power to remove children.
Yeah, she doesn't have the power to remove children, or forcing, in fact, she can't force people, nobody can force anybody to have a vaccine in the state of Wisconsin, because if all someone has to do is say, I don't, I feel a moral obligation not to have a vaccine. So, so it's, no one's going to be forced to have a vaccine. No children are going to be taken from, or stolen from their homes by the public health nurse or their, their successor, as I pointed out to a constituent who called earlier today. If somebody replaces Barb, we'll be very fortunate. The, the, there have been at least seven public health nurses around the state who have retired or quit over the stress and the lack of support. I might also point out that the state of Wisconsin, it ranks towards the bottom in terms of support for public health, and has, when I was on the board, the chairman of the Board of Health, had taken considerable amount of resources from the department financially and personal resources. So we are understaffed and underfunded as, in, in public health. The other thing I think we can say for certain is that it was never Rick Niemeyer's intention to collude with Barb Barzac to, to take power. I can't even verbalize this because it doesn't make any sense. We all live here, we all have families, we all have friends in Tremblow County, and we're all just doing our jobs, you know? And the responsibility that we have been given is written down in state statutes, and we do our best to make sure that happens. I do want to say one thing, though, which, one more thing, thank you. Okay. And, and this, and this has to do with this, this really odd kind of logic that says only an elected official should be able to, to do something, you know, and we're given the responsibility to hire people to do what it is that, that we're responsible for doing. I can't imagine myself enforcing a zoning ordinance, doing a building inspection, making sure that nutrients, nutrients stay on the soil when someone spreads their manure, or, or for that matter, checking on tuberculosis patients for Pete's sake, you know? It's, it's what we do, you know? This is what we do. And, and, and hopefully, we, a lot of people appreciate what we do and what the county does. So thanks a lot for listening to me, John. You could have cut me off a long time ago.
Is there any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
We're elected by these people out here who demonstrated that they definitely do not want this, and the people that we represent said they don't want, so I believe that we should be voting on this tonight.
Okay, we have two separate motions on the floor. The first one was to delay it, send it back. One motion is, one motion is to send it back to committee.
I think Beth, Beth had some comments.
So, Beth?
Yes, I would just like to make a couple of comments. I did keep track of correspondence that I received in the last few days. There were 14 county emails today that I went through, and 13 were no, one was yes. Most of, I'm not going to read what it all is because we've heard it for several hours tonight. I did receive two letters, which were, which everyone else received copies of, and against. Seventeen different phone calls, mostly today. One was for information, or no, more than that. Twenty-one phone calls, I believe, if my counting is good. Seventeen were no. One person was for information only. One person said we should just take this off the agenda, and two people said yes because of what George has just said. We have hired people in the health department. Barb is our health officer. We, we have police officers that are not elected, that do the job that they're supposed to do, that Barb has been, and her department, they've been trained, hired to do the job, and they're concerned about the public safety. I think it would be a good, good idea to bring it back to the Board of Health. I am the chair of the Board of Health. I don't think it's going to solve anything, because all these hundreds of people that are against it will still be against whatever we decide. In fact, most of the people that contacted me were not from my district. So it's interesting that my district have no opinion one way or the other, or they just didn't feel that they should contact me. I would go either way. I, I'm ready to vote this evening, but if we refer it back to the committee, that would be fine, too. I think there's a lot of miscommunication out there. Barb is not going in there and stealing your children and doing these other things.
We do have a motion on the floor to-
I'm ready to vote.
Oh, one more. Dan?
I'd like to vote on this tonight, save these good people another trip when it comes up again.
So can we, can we go through the first one, to send it back to committee, and if that's turned down, then it goes to the vote? Then we have, and you have, we have a motion, we have a motion from, I think it was from Chuck Wallach and a second from Tim Ziegler, or?
No, Jeannie Nutter.
From Jeannie Nutter to send it back to committee. And-
Jack, could I just clarify, so everybody knows what they're doing. This is a procedural question. So if you're, if the intention of, if your, your intention as a board member is to vote the amendment, or to vote the resolution down, you will also have to vote no on this motion to send it back, just so everybody knows what they're doing.
Right. If you vote no on sending it back to committee, you're voting to vote to motion one way or the other tonight.
Say that again?
If we vote no on this, to send it back to committee, then we go back to voting on the actual resolution.
Oh, right.
And we go back to the resolution, and then we vote it on again.
Yes. So.
For passing.
If there's no more discussion, let's do a roll call on the existing motion on the floor, which is to send it back to committee.
Could we explain why it's being sent back to committee?
That's a good question.
Well, I-
I think it's a procedural-
Because we need, we need, in my opinion, we need clarity. We, we need, because the bottom line is the issue of, of the fine with the ordinance, but it's, nothing is really clear. So it, it can't be, it has to have clarity, and they have to hammer that out and work it out. And maybe they'll, you know, just, anyway, that's it.
Okay. Go ahead with the vote. This is a yes vote, means you're gonna send it back to committees. A no vote means it's going back to the resolution and we'll vote on no.
Yeah, no vote's gonna come back.
A no vote will send us back to the original resolution.
No, no. A no vote will keep it here tonight.
And no vote will keep it here.
Yes sends it to the committee.
Yes sends it to committee, yep.
Okay. Ready to call the roll?
I am. Is everybody else ready?
I think we're right-
Clear on how they're gonna vote? Okay. First vote is Sally Miller. To refer back to committee.
Yes.
Richard Sasha?
No.
Joe Feltes?
No.
George Brand?
Uh, no.
Beth Killian?
No.
Randy Tulipson?
No.
Michelle Haynes?
No.
John Austin?
No.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Ziegler?
No.
Dan Schreiner?
No.
Jeannie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan?
No.
Ron Johnson?
No.
Rick Nimitz?
No.
And Douglas Winters?
No.
I, that didn't take long. Now we're down to the actual resolution.
Read the 13, yep.
Read the resolution. Brother, yeah.
Whereas in December 2019, a novel strain of the coronavirus known as COVID-19 was detected and has continued to spread throughout the world, including in Tremblow County. And whereas Tremblow County continues to be impacted by COVID-19 and is working to protect the health and well-being of its residents from the spread of COVID-19 and to deal with the impacts the pandemic is having on the county. And whereas due to limitations at the state level on implementing preventative measures for the health and safety of Wisconsin residents, such preventative measures are left to local municipalities to implement. And whereas due to the significant increase in COVID cases in Tremblow County, preventative measures are necessary for the health and safety of Tremblow County residents and visitors. And whereas revisions to Tremblow County ordinance, Chapter 11, Public Health Ordinance, would give Tremblow County additional options to implement such preventative measures on a local level for the health and safety of Tremblow County residents and visitors. Now be it resolved that the Tremblow County Board of Supervisors hereby approves the attached revisions to Tremblow County ordinance, Chapter 11, Public Health Ordinance, submitted by Tremblow County Board of Health, Beth Killian, Rick Nimitz, Sally Miller, Ron Johnson, Pam Nelson, Dr. William Vaxa, Dr. Kimberly Breidenbach.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to vote the county order, county ordinance, Chapter 11, Public Health, down.
Oh, you just make a motion?
No, you just-
Make a motion. Like discuss the, discuss it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Seconded by Winters. Okay, discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
All right, again, for the sake of discussion, we've, everybody's already made up their minds. But just for the sake of discussion, the existing, clarification, the, if this is, if the revision, we are voting on revisions. So if the revisions are voted down, the existing health ordinance remains in effect.
Right.
Correct.
Right.
All right, just so everybody knows.
I need a clarification. Are we voting on this negative motion, that we are voting it down?
No, that's not a negative, you just said it wrong. It's just-
Okay, we're voting to-
The motion is on, that's resolved.
It's either voting to approve the resolution or-
Or not.
Or not. And if you approve it, you're approving the resolution and the draft. Okay. Is there any other?
Call a question.
Got the question, question? Discuss, oh, I'll take it, George. One more.
All right, one more, thanks. I appreciate it. I'm sorry. And I'm sorry, everybody else, but-
Can you be brief, George?
No, I can't. The, the, the issue, I think that's, that I need to know is, is twofold. One is, what are, what are the revisions that we're being asked to vote, vote on? I know, I had heard later that, that there were, there was a copy circulated which showed what the revisions are. You, you've pointed out what it is that is revised in Section 4, and, and what was added in Section 7. Were those the only revisions?
Under Section 4, actually, let me go back up here. I'll, and I'll, I'll do this quickly. Under 11.03, that entire section is new.
Is what?
Is new.
11.03, communicable diseases?
Yep, that entire section is new. And then, under 11.01, Section Number 1, that is also new.
Ask Mr. George.
Okay, okay.
And then there are a few definitions in the above section as well.
Oh, okay, thanks, thanks, thanks.
Crossouts in the other lines.
Okay. Okay, thank-
You didn't read your email.
So this is all new? Yes. All of Number 4?
All of, all of 11.03 is new.
Oh, of, oh, 11.03 is new.
Issue, and when I say new, it's not in the existing ordinance.
Oh, I see. So my, I apologize to any constituent whom I suggested to that her authority already exists, but, but what, 11.034 was the language of the state statutes.
Correct. So that authority already exists.
But-
But not in the ordinance.
But not in our ordinance. Okay, I got it.
Would it be helpful to read out loud what the changes are?
There's, it's, it's more than I had thought.
It's, it's a big, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
The public seems to know it better than the board.
No, I know it. I just want to make sure everybody knows what we're voting on.
No, the question was called for.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
We're-
I called the question, Mr. Chair.
And so that's been called twice. So I think we'll go ahead with the roll call vote.
Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. This is on the resolution. Chuck Wallach?
No.
Tim Ziegler?
No.
Dan Schreiner?
No.
Jeannie Nutter?
No.
Kurt Skoyan?
No.
Ron Johnson?
No.
Rick Nimitz?
No.
Douglas Winters?
No.
Sally Miller?
No.
Richard Sasha?
No.
Joe Feltes?
No.
George Brand?
No.
Beth Killian?
Yes.
Randy Tulipson?
No.
Michelle Haynes?
No.
John Austin?
No.
One to fifty.
Resolution, fine.
Whereas city by city and county by county guidance on COVID-19 prevention and mitigation across the state of Wisconsin represents an inconsistent patchwork of direction. And whereas this patchwork direction allows for the unmitigated spread of the COVID-19 during a worldwide pandemic. And whereas public health is not an issue that should be politicized. And whereas convening a special session of the legislature to provide leadership and guidance would provide township, cities, villages, and county government bodies the needed and consistent direction to handle the spread of COVID-19. Now be it resolved, Tremblow County Board of Supervisors formally request a special session of the Wisconsin State Legislature be convened to develop statewide direction on the handling of COVID-19 at a time of great need and to, to avoid catastrophe and economic harm to Wisconsin families and communities. And be it further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send copies of this resolution to all counties in the state of Wisconsin, offices of governor, and to all members of the legislature for the state of Wisconsin, introduced by John Austin, county board chair.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Wallach, second by Nutter. Discussion, now this is basically just a statewide cookie cutter resolution that they're sending to try to get legislated, get something done. So, any discussion on it at all?
I gotta, I just gotta remind everybody that the only thing that the legislature has voted on since the beginning of the pandemic was to make it possible for counties to, to give a property tax holiday to, to their citizens, which we chose not to do, partially because it would defund even more an already struggling municipality. I, I'm not sure that these guys are going to be receptive to this, but I would vote for it, yeah.
Okay. Do you know how to call a roll? Oh, voice vote, voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Jeannie Nutter, carry. Next one is-
Whereas, whereas Brian A. Bouch, landowner petition- Whereas, whereas Brian A. Bouch, landowner petitioner, has requested the rezon of a parcel of land in the town of Arcadia to have the appropriate zoning in place for a parcel split for a future land sale, and whereas the rezon is on approximately eleven acres more or less, and whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to Section fifty-nine point sixty-nine parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the town of Arcadia supports the rezon request, and whereas the Environment and Land Use Committee moved to rezon this parcel from Exclusive Agriculture to EA two to Rural Residential RR, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances, now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated, introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, George Brandt, Beth Killian, Charles Wallach, Kathy Zeglin, Kurt Skoyan, Randy Severson.
A move for adoption.
I'll second.
Motion to approve by Kurt Skoyan.
Give it to him.
All right, motion by Kurt, seconded by Brandt.
All right, Kevin is here, he's been here all night, um...
Are you kidding, I thought he left?
Good evening, so the stars actually aligned twice this month, more than tonight, because the town of Arcadia had a special meeting for this gentleman, Environment and Land Use Committee had a special meeting, uh, December seventh, that was able to have this before you tonight, this was a, a public hearing and rezon for eleven acres from, uh, as Paul had read, um, Exclusive Ag two to Rural Residential to allow for real estate sale before the end of the year, during the public hearing, there was no opposition to this, the town of Arcadia at their special meeting did approve the rezon request, uh, the Environment and Land Use Committee approved it, it does fall in line with, uh, similar properties around this location for the town of Arcadia's plan, and there was no opposition from the public on for or against this rezon.
Okay, any discussion?
Down the Tremblow Room is getting sanitized.
I was just looking at that, that's the super cool sanitizer, guys. And you should have sanitized your mic.
Okay, no discussion?
Call for the roll.
George Brandt?
Yes.
Beth Killian?
Yes.
Randy Tullosen?
Yes.
Michelle Haynes?
Yes.
John Austin?
Yes.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Zeglin?
He stepped out.
Okay, Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan?
Yes.
Ron Johnson, he stepped out. Rick Nimitz?
Yes.
Doug Winters?
Yes.
Sally Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sasha?
Yes.
Joe Feltes?
Yes.
Those two didn't make it back.
Didn't ask me.
You're not on?
Yeah, I did.
Right here, John Austin, right after Michelle Haynes. Maybe...
Must be getting late.
I don't remember saying anything, so...
Here comes Ron. Ron, do you want to vote on this, uh, rezon? Yes?
Do you know who you're voting on?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm in the committee.
No, I'm not.
Oh, you're not?
And then, well, Tim is going to have to miss, we'll have to ask him later. Ready for the next one? Whereas Andrew R. and Catherine C. Devine, landowner petitioner, have requested the rezon of a parcel of land in the town of Gale to have the appropriate zoning in place to sell the acreage, and whereas the rezon is on approximately five point one acres more or less, and whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to Section fifty-nine point sixty-nine parentheses five of the Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the town of Gale supports the rezon request, and whereas Environment and Land Use Committee moved to rezon this parcel from Rural Residential RR to Residential twenty, R twenty, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances, now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated, introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, George Brandt, Beth Killian, Chuck, Charles Wallach, Kathy Zeglin, Kurt Skoyan, Randy Severson. George?
I'll second.
Motion by George, seconded by Jeanie Nutter, I think.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think Kevin's still here.
Kevin's still here?
Just don't say good morning, Kevin.
Sorry about that, yeah, so this, uh, this property, um, the rezon took place at our normal meeting, which was December second, the rezon was from Rural Residential to R twenty and the five point one acres in the town of Gale, and this was to resolve a, a property, um, parcel proposed parcel split that our real property lister had found, and then it also, um, clears up and allows them to be able to retain one side of the property and sell the other, so it was, uh, partially, um, for a violation, and the other part allows them to sell a piece of property, this is a rural subdivision that R twenty, um, fits actually the nature of the, the parcels rather than rural, rural residential, the town of Gale did support it during the public hearing, there were no testimony for or against the proposal, Environment and Land Use Committee did support the proposal, I'm bringing it before you tonight, and this does meet the land use requirements for the town of Gale as well, so any questions?
Okay, no discussion? Call the roll.
Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan?
Yes.
Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Rick Nimitz? Doug Winters?
Yes.
Sally Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sasha?
Yes.
Joe Feltes?
Yes.
George Brandt?
Yes.
Beth Killian?
Yes.
Randy Tullosen?
Yes.
Michelle Haynes?
Yes.
John Austin?
Yes.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Zeglin?
Yes.
Do you want to vote, Tim, on the other one?
Yes.
Okay, yes you want to, or no you?
Vote.
Okay, yes, gotcha. Okay, sixteen to zero.
Okay, Executive Finance Committee interpreter compensation.
Whereas Tremblow County has the need for qualified interpreters to assist in communicating with individuals with limited English proficiency, LEP, and hearing impairment, and whereas Tremblow County has recently adopted an interpreter policy to assist in establishing a list of qualified interpreters, and whereas Tremblow County wants to compensate the qualified interpreters assisting the county for their ability and time, and whereas this resolution sets a compensation for interpreters used by the county, not including circuit court interpreters, who are subject to separate regulations, qualifications, and compensation, now be it resolved that effective January one, twenty twenty-one, interpreters covered by this resolution shall be compensated as follows, hourly rate of pay for in-person service, thirty dollars per hour, minimum one hour, fifteen dollars each one half hour thereafter, hourly rate of pay for virtual and telephone services, thirty dollars per hour billed in fifteen minute increments, mileage and travel time, mileage at the rate received by county board supervisors and travel time as determined by each department, now be it further resolved that effective January one, twenty twenty-two, interpreters covered by this resolution shall be compensated as follows, hourly rate of pay for in-person services, forty dollars per hour, minimum one hour, twenty dollars each one half hour thereafter, hourly rate of pay for virtual and telephone services, forty dollars per hour billed in fifteen minute increments, mileage at the rate received by county board supervisors, and travel time as determined by each department, introduced by Executive Finance Committee, Chuck Wallach, Richard Sasha, George Brandt, John Austin, Tim Zeglin.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, my husband is a sign language interpreter, he hasn't interpreted for the county for several years, but I think I'm going to abstain in the event that it might seem inappropriate, so I'm going to go ahead and do my mouth and video and, and abstain.
Okay, still looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion button.
Second.
Nutter, seconded by Sasha. Any other comments? Okay, we'll just call them all.
Hang on, I'm going to write down her abstain right off the bat here.
Okay.
So I got that out of the way, Michelle Haynes?
Yes.
John Austin?
Yes.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Zeglin?
Yes.
Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan?
Yes.
Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Rick Nimitz?
Yes.
Douglas Winters? Sally Miller is abstained, Richard Sasha?
Yes.
Joe Feltes?
Yes.
George Brandt?
Yes.
Beth Killian?
Yes.
Randy Tullosen?
Yes.
Fifteen to zero, one abstain.
I don't mean Parks, Tourism, and Economic Development Committees accepting and awarding Wisconsin tourism relief to accelerate vitality and economic lift travel grant.
You bet. Where, oh, oh, no, maybe I don't need to, it's short and sweet, we got...
Do you want us to watch, do you wipe off that mic?
Whereas Wisconsin Department of Tourism has received funds from the United States Department of Treasury pursuant to Section six oh one parentheses A of the Social Security Act, as added by Section five thousand one of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, to be used for the purposes specified in the CARES Act, and whereas Tremblow County submitted an application for and was awarded from the Department, Wisconsin Department of Tourism, a Wisconsin tourism relief to accelerate vitality and economic lift travel grant in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, and whereas these grant monies will be used for the promotion of Tremblow County to leisure and business travelers through a range of activities, including advertising media buys and creation and distribution of printed and electronic promotional tourist materials, now be it resolved that the Tremblow County Board of Supervisors does hereby accept this tourism relief to accelerate vitality and economic lift travel grant in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars to be deposited into account one oh one point four three seven oh one and paid out of account one oh one point five five three five oh point nine nine nine, introduced by Parks, Tourism, and Economic Development Committee, Beth Killian, Jeanie Nutter, Buzz Sorgy, Dan Schreiner, Gene Galazinski, Bob Petrick, Joe Feltes. Vote for adoption.
I'll second.
Motion by...
Dan?
Dan, seconded by Feltes, uh, I got one dumb question, how can you put it in one account and take it out of another?
You put it into a revenue, it's not a...
Oh, okay, okay. I'm just thinking of my checking account.
Mr. Chair, Rob Grover is here, if you would like to hear about this grant.
You got something you want to say?
No, I, I was just here in case you had questions, but it's pretty cut and dry, we received a grant from the State Department of Tourism to help market the county, and you just have to formally accept it, so I sure hope you will.
Yeah, okay.
You never turn down money.
Hey, I don't think they will turn it down, but we'll find out, call the roll.
Joe Feltes?
Yes.
George Brandt? Beth Killian?
Yes.
Randy Tullosen?
Yes.
Michelle Haynes?
Yes.
John Austin?
Yes.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Zeglin?
Yes.
Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan?
Yes.
Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Rick Nimitz?
Yes.
Douglas Winters? Sally Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sasha?
Yes.
Looks like sixteen to zero.
Thanks for standing.
Hey, Human Services Committee, the ADRC reinvestment funding.
Whereas Aging and Disability Resource Centers, ADRC, are the first place to go to give accurate, unbiased information on all aspects of life related to aging or living with a disability, and whereas ADRC services include providing information and assistance, benefits counseling, coordinating short-term services, conducting functional screens, and enrollment processing and counseling, and whereas in Wisconsin, there are currently thirty-four single-county ADRCs, twelve multi-county tribal ADRCs, and seven tribal Aging and Disability Resource Specialists that work within ADRC, whereas ADRCs serve the fast-growing demographic of our state's population, and the funding method for ADRCs has not been revised in more than a decade, and funding for ADRCs has not increased since two thousand and six, and whereas it is, it has become evident that ADRC funding needs revision for a number of reasons, including the current inequitable distribution of funding among ADRCs, the need to increase funding so that all ADRCs may effectively meet their mission as outlined in the Scope and Services Contract Addendum, and whereas the Office for Resource Center Development, ORCD, within the Department of Health Services, DHS, established a stakeholder advisory group in two thousand seventeen to discuss ADRC funding, and whereas the Stakeholder Advisory Group identified a number of issues with the current funding formula, such as dollars are distributed based on the date of ADRC establishment, older ADRCs, Generation one, receive more funding than ADRCs established at a later date, Generation two or three ADRCs, the current formula does not take into account elements associated with health and social inequity that require a gradient need for ADRC services, the current formula does not adjust with need, Wisconsin's aging and disability populations continue to grow and are expected to grow significantly over the next twenty years, the current formula does not account for needed cost of living adjustments, and whereas a significant state GPR investment is needed to implement the recommendations of the Stakeholder Advisory Group, whereas such a significant state investment would provide consistency to ADRC funding statewide, cover the services required and recommended in the Scope of Services Contract Addendum, and equalize services among ADRCs without reducing Tremblow County's annual allocation, and whereas the work of the Stakeholder Advisory Group complements the work of the governor's task force on caregiving, now be it resolved that the Tremblow County Board of Supervisors does hereby support the following increases in the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three state biennial budget to ensure access to critical services provided by ADRCs in Wisconsin's aging and disability populations, provide an additional twenty-seven million four hundred and ten thousand dollar GPR in funding to our state's ADRCs, it is important to note that the proposed change in the ADRC allocation methodology, methodology cannot occur unless the full twenty-seven point four million is allocated, provided, provide additional funding to expand slash equalize ADRC services across the state, expand dementia care specialist funding statewide, three point three, three million three hundred and twenty thousand dollars fully fund elder benefit specialists statewide, two point three million dollars expand caregiver support and programs, three point six million dollars expand health promotion services, six million dollars expand care transition services, six million dollars fund aging and disability resources in the tribes, one million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars fully fund aging and disability resource support systems, two million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Governor Tony Evers, DOA Secretary Joel Brennan, DHS Secretary designee Andrea Palm, the Wisconsin Counties Association, and all area legislators, introduced by Human Services Board, Kurt Skoyan, Jeanie Nutter, Rick Nimitz, Dorje Blaha, Diane Schreeter.
Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jeanie Nutter?
Second.
Seconded by Joe Feltes? Any further discussion?
Deb is on.
Deb is here, you want to pick on it a little bit?
She's staying up late.
This resolution comes from Wisconsin Counties Association, uh, and, um, we have ADRCs that was created early on, so we're funded pretty well, um, the initial plan for funding was to equalize what's in the current pot, which would have meant to take a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars from our county, with this resolution, we would not lose any funding and we would actually gain a little bit of funding, so it won't affect us, affect our budget, our current budget very much, um, but the opposite could have a very negative effect on us, so this would be very favorable for our county.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the roll.
I think this can be just the...
Yeah, there's no money.
Not funding itself from the county.
We're praying for more money.
Okay, exactly.
Voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You gotta wait for his vote.
I think that was, I think that was four.
He went to post it.
I forgot about you. You gotta say aye when I ask for it, sooner, just anticipate, okay, Audit Committee.
Whereas the Audit Committee has audited the following claims and recommend that they be allowed as follows. John Lawson: $311.50. George Brandt: $239.10. Joe Feltes: $536.85. Michelle Haynes: $64.38. Ron Johnson: $646.65. Beth Killian: $150. Sally Miller: $1,850. Michael Nelson is zero. Rick Nimitz: $342.60. Jeanie Nutter: $200. Richard Sasha: $369.60. Dan Schreiner: $200. Kurt Skoyan: $375.92. Randy Tulfson: $267.85. Chuck Wallach: $232.20. Douglas Winters: $403.50. Timothy Zeglin: $212.10. Grand total, or total per diem's: $5,400. Total expenses: $1,002.25. Grand total: $6,402.25. Now be it resolved that the claims be allowed as shown. Introduced by Audit Committee: John Lawson, Sally Miller, Doug Winters.
Killian will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to make. That's Kelly, seconded by Winters?
Sally.
So that's for several months from now, but the other thing I wanted to point out is that because a lot of that is related to the committees that I served on that are COVID-related, the new committees, we're going to get a lot of that back from the COVID reimbursement, correct, Paul?
That is correct.
Actually, we had to mean today we could get up to 90% of it back instead of the 80.
Right. And so I just wanted to let you guys know, hiring the Integrity Group has really been a phenomenal windfall for us. They've really helped us find, I would never have thought that I could do that, and they let us know that we could, so.
Okay. Call a roll.
John Lawson?
Yes.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Zeglin?
Yes.
Dan Schreiner?
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan?
Yes.
I waited, see. Ron Johnson?
Yes.
Rick Nimitz?
Yes.
Doug Winters?
Yes.
Sally Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sasha?
Yes.
Joe Feltes?
Yes.
George Brandt?
Yes.
Beth Killian?
Yes.
Randy Tulfson?
Yes.
Michelle Haynes?
Yes.
16 to 0.
Okay, we need an election to public member from the Healthcare Center, and you have the letter on hand. You want to read it?
This writing is to confirm notification that Edith Herner, who serves as Secretary Treasurer on the Trempl County Healthcare Center Board of Trustees, term expires December 31, 2020. I would appreciate it if you could add this to your next full county board meeting. Sincerely, Jerry P.
Mr. Chair, nominee for another three years.
This is nominations, by the way.
Nomination, yeah. Motion?
No, you just nominated.
Waiters? Okay.
There's no second, yeah.
Oh, no second.
But you got to ask three times.
Okay. Is there any other nomination? Is there any other nomination? Is there any other nomination?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the nominations and cast the unanimous ballot for Ms. Herner.
Okay. All those in favor signify.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Winters. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? Terry. C, appoint a member to the Windy Rivers Board, and we're, again, this is not a call for a vote, we're appointing George Brandt again, and I'm assuming you're going to accept it?
I will accept it humbly, yes.
And you have to do a motion to confirm, or what?
A motion to confirm my appointment?
Ooh.
Motion by Johnson, seconded by Killian. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? Terry. C, appoint a member to the Trempl County Housing Board to succeed Lynn Bowick. Motion?
I make a motion to appoint Lynn Bowick.
Motion, did you accept it?
Definitely.
You did? I'm looking for that one. Oh, you did, okay.
Well, yeah.
A motion, motion from?
Michelle.
Second to that?
Killian?
Will second.
Seconded by Killian. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Terry. Okay, appointment of a member to replace Sam Erickson on the Veteran Service Board.
You might want to read that letter.
I worried that I got it here somewhere.
I can read it, it'll take me a while.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, this is to County Board Chair from Steve Young, Veteran Service Officer. In accordance with Wisconsin Statute, Section 45.81 (A), please appoint the following veteran to the Veteran Service and Commission for a three-year term beginning January 1, 2021 to replace Sam Erickson, who has graciously stepped down to allow other veterans a chance to serve the community. Brian P. Liga from Pigeon Falls. Mr. Liga is a Gulf War and Iraq veteran who has served over 27 years of active duty service in the United States Air Force. He has a 90% disability rating from the Veterans Affairs. He served from December 17, 1984 to December 31, 2011. He served in various capacities to include video and photo maintenance, security of high-value personnel and equipment, as well as the Superintendent of Training. Currently, he is a substitute teacher in the Whitehall School District. He is also commander of the Whitehall American Legion Post. He would be a great addition to our Veteran Service Commission, and I recommend him for appointment.
Motion by Feltes?
Second.
Seconded by Sasha.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you allow me, this is, I kind of wish the people, the folks who came today to complain about, to complain in their hearts that they felt that unelected officials doing government work were unconstitutional, illegal, criminal, treason, terrorist acts. I could see how government works. We've just, we're appointing four unelected people to boards and commissions that serve the public on a regular and important basis, so, anyway, I had to say that.
They might be still watching.
Oh, they might be.
Could be, yeah, there's nobody in the Trempl Room anymore.
Well, the TV is still on.
So anyway, okay, that's good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Terry. Okay, members, appoint members to?
Announce.
Announce members to the Wisconsin County Association, County Ambassador Program, and it's Tim Zeglin and myself. And Tim, you wanted to talk a little bit about it and explain it?
Just to refresh everybody's memories, the W, the Wisconsin Ambassador Program, County Ambassador Program, is sponsored by the Wisconsin Counties Association. Its purpose is to bring people from the counties, or bring representatives of counties, in touch with legislators. So being, being on this program involves going, this year is going to involve one virtual meeting in January, possibly two, two more meetings, virtual or not, to be determined, but the whole point of it is to have counties in better touch with what's happening in the legislature and to give us, also give counties a chance to input some ideas to the legislators. I think it's something that's overdue and was available to everybody. There was a notification when I was in WCA.
I'll be signed up in Johnson.
Okay. A motion to approve?
No?
Not any in that?
Nope.
Oh, cool.
It's because the county, WCA did it.
Okay, WCA did, okay. Many reports? Finance reports, you got it in your deal?
Should all been mailed to you, got the monthly reports, the sales tax, and the general fund balances. You got any questions? Let me know.
There's no question, we'll go on to letters, non-reachable letters.
The first one is from the Arcadia Public Library. Dear Trempl County Board, we would like to thank you for the non-resident reimbursement funding of 100% for the Trempl Library, Public Libraries for 2021. The increase in funding will help to better serve our community. It will help support literacy and learning, as well as aid people in changing their lives through reading and education. We wish to express our gratitude in helping support our, our gratitude in helping support our library system. Thank you for making a difference, and thank you for all that you do. It is greatly appreciated. Sincerely, Jennifer Galazinski, Director.
Thank you. Letter from Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance.
The Board of Directors of the Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance Corporation recently took action declaring a dividend for member counties for the 2019 liability policy year. Based on premium investment and loss results, the Board has declared a dividend totaling $250,000 to member county participants. The total dividend amount was reduced for the 2019 policy year in order to maintain rate stability. Attached is your dividend check in the amount of $3,741. The County Mutual Board of Directors continues to stay focused on risk management and protecting counties. Additional investments continue to be made in loss control programs to benefit member counties, and including cyber liability insurance in each member's policy. This is all done at no cost to members. We encourage all County Mutual member counties to continue utilizing our valuable loss control services. In addition, a property insurance program is now offered by your county to provide the needed coverage and risk management benefits to its members. The Trempl County Board of Supervisors can feel proud of the foresight and courage shown by the formation of and participation in the Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance Corporation. The additional return of surplus to its participant reflects the mutual philosophy of providing liability insurance substantially at cost. On behalf of the County, Wisconsin County Mutual Insurance Corporation, we look forward to many more years of service to Trempl County. And it's Willie Johnson, President, Lance Plimmell, Vice President, and Bill Baraboo, Secretary, Treasurer. Congratulations on a job well done.
I have a question.
Yes.
I assume we're getting this money back. Do we have to approve to accept the money to put in anywhere? It just goes back into where it came out of automatically?
Basically into the general fund.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, letter from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services.
Yeah, they should have been here for this. The Department of Health Services, DHS, congratulates the Trempl County Health Department for demonstrating the infrastructure and program capacity to be certified as a Level 2 Health Department. I'm happy to report that the Trempl County Health Department met all the criteria reviewed by the DHS review team. The DHS 140 review is an opportunity to assess quality improvement opportunities in addition to Wisconsin Statute and rule compliance. This focus helps assure a strong statewide public health system. During this time of limited capacity for local health departments and DHS, we are reviewing health departments with the goals of maintaining legal compliance and reducing regulatory stress. DHS anticipates returning to quality improvement-focused reviews in either 2021 or 2022. The Trempl County Health Department and 21 other local health departments who will undergo these limited-capacity reviews will be the first departments given a quality improvement review. I want to acknowledge the work of the Trempl County Health Department staff. Barsik, Health Officer, did an excellent job of representing and explaining the work of the Health Department. The stress of operating a health department and the demands on public health directors and professionals have increased exponentially during this state and global pandemic. I applaud the dedicated efforts of Barbara and the Trempl County Health Department staff to keep your jurisdiction healthy and safe. I also appreciate the support of the Trempl County Board of Health for maintaining a strong public health department. Pandemic response has potentially caused you and your jurisdiction to think about public health issues you may not, you may have not considered before. I'm sure with ongoing support for evidence-based quality public health initiatives by you and your fellow Board of Health members, Trempl County Health Department will continue to protect and promote the health of people in your jurisdiction. Sincerely, Stephanie Smiley, Interim State Health Officer and Division Administrator.
Too bad you didn't read that earlier.
Right. We must be doing something right.
You mentioned that in your article.
Do you want to copy the letter?
I'd like to get one more comment. This has taken years. This is not an honorary advancement. It's taken years to achieve this. Barb was working on it three years ago when I was on the Board of Health. So this is, it involves meeting a multitude of criteria, jumping through all kinds of hoops, and it is a real honor, not just some, it's a real honor.
It's hard to get to that point.
Are you going to put it in the paper for us?
Well, I think it's important. I mean, I just have to say, I feel, I wanted to cry when I saw Barb walk out, you know? It was good.
Oh, and one of the reasons, I mean, it had nothing to do with the ordinance, but it was something positive for our health department, so I requested the letter be read.
Right. Okay, Dr. Cook, the play mileage, need a motion for this?
Yep.
Seconded by Feltes? Seconded by Nutter? Was it? I'll take Skoyan.
Skoyan was in there.
You can give it to.
I'll give it to Kurt Skoyan. Okay, seconded. Okay, call a roll.
Randy Tulfson?
Yes.
Michelle Haynes?
Yes.
John Lawson?
Yes.
Chuck Wallach?
Yes.
Tim Zeglin?
Yes.
Dan Schreiner?
Yep.
Jeanie Nutter?
Yes.
Kurt Skoyan?
Yes.
Ron Johnson?